I'd like to call to order the 7 o'clock regular meeting of the Enfield Board of Education on April 23rd, 2024. Can you please stand for the moment of silence and the pledge with Tina LeBlanc?
On April 11th, we lost a beloved member of our Enfield School community, Trisha Boucher. Trisha was a bright light in the hallways and classrooms at Enfield Street School. Trisha loved sunflowers, the color purple, the Beatles, and the TV show Friends. This is just a small glimpse into Trisha's life. Some of us will forever miss her daily Facebook memes that would give us a laugh as the sun came up. Trisha may be gone from our sight, but she will never truly be gone, as she will always remain in our hearts. Although a good heart has stopped beating, a heart that has touched so many lives can't help but live on in those it loved. We share in this time of grief, but also share in the love and memories of Trisha. Let's offer a moment of silence for Trisha and her family, her husband Steve, who she lovingly referred to as her lobster, her kids Logan and Delaney, her best friend Joe, her parents Larry and Jean Hall, her brother Cory, and the Enfield Street School community. The pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure. I would just like to add, that's why we have flowers in front of our nameplates this evening in remembrance of Trisha.
Okay, fire evacuation announcement. In the unlikely event of a fire, you can exit through the rear of council chambers out to the parking lot, or you can exit through these side doors here, take a left down the stairway, and out to the parking lot. Kathy, can I have the roll call, please?
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Mrs. Akri?
Here.
Dr. Kalnun?
Here.
Mrs. Cushman?
Here.
Mr. Genitis?
Here.
Mr. Cobber?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Pickett?
Here.
Chairwoman Riley?
Here.
Okay, number six, board guests. We have invention convention students.
Thank you, Chairwoman Riley. Tonight, we welcome our esteemed coordinator, Elena Beebe, along with Prudence Crandall, grade five student Cameron McIntosh. I'm not going to tell you why Cameron's here. We're going to let Mrs. Beebe, and more importantly, Cameron, tell you why he's here and why we're recognizing him this evening. Take it away, kiddo.
My name is Cameron McIntosh, and I am the inventor of the cool comb. My invention made it to the national finals in Michigan this summer. I invented the cool comb to help people get their hair ready without making a mess. I started this invention using a comb, syringe, tubing, and some other pieces. Since then, I have worked with Ryan, an Enfield High School student, to create a 3D version. The cool comb dispenses hair gel and other products directly from the comb, so you don't have to use your hands. It is so easy, it can be used by boys, girls, and people of all ages. Thank you for your time. Please enjoy my commercial that I made.
Okay, so this is the, um, this is the video that he had to send last year to the state of Connecticut for the semifinals. It is a little low in volume.
Hello, judges. My name is Cameron James McIntosh, and I'm 10 years old and in the fourth grade at Prudence Crandall Schools, Enfield, Connecticut. I enjoy playing with my four brothers, and I also enjoy playing on my travel team, basketball and soccer. My two
Give it to a kid.
If I can assist if you need.
Which one were you using that said you use?
I think you have to go into settings and turn off the accessibility.
I'll fix it later.
All you 100. No signal. TV, one press channel, stand below. To or press the source button below. Sources, 5 PC.
Favorite colors are black and white, and my favorite ingredient is the same thing because it also has black and white. Favorite colors. And now, I'm going to teach you about the cool problem. Problem I was having is in the morning, I was having trouble doing my hair, getting frustrated and mad, tired. My hands were getting all sticky. Problem I'm trying to solve is that when I put gel in my hair, I put it in my hands first. This makes my hands very sticky. I need to put the gel in my hair before I do my hair. The gel makes the hair stay in place easier in the morning. I have talked to other people, and they do not like having to put gel in their hands because of how it makes my hands sticky. So I wanted to find a solution that allowed me to put gel in my hair without my hands getting sticky. Solution. Solution to this problem was a primer hairbrush that releases gel out of it and would not get my hands sticky. This would allow me to get ready, clean, I would not have to be washing the mess off my hands. It would also be a good and easy way, a good start to my day. Research. In order to find out if it had been done before, I asked my parents, and they both said it was not an invention like the idea I had. They both thought it would be a good idea. I wanted to be 100% sure, so my teacher suggested I go on school and safari to research. Found out that there is no such thing as my invention already invented. How it works. Load gel into the syringe, put the stopper off the syringe. Gel will move through the plastic tubing, come out through the small holes, brush your hair, boom, you'll have the best hair in the world. And don't worry, I will demonstrate soon. Challenges I had. While building my invention, one of the challenges I faced was the holes of a plastic tubing. Drilling the holes in the invention, I realized the holes were too small for the gel to fit. Dad said we could drill bigger holes. Wanted to drill them much bigger, and the lesson he taught me was that we should not drill too big because we can not take back a hole that always use a bigger drill bit on the small hole. Test. I finished building the invention. I had to test it. The first test I had was my dad tried on me. No gel, it would break. And after it didn't break, we tried it with gel, and it worked perfect. Then we tried, had it. Then we had my little brothers test it themselves, and it worked very well. Then it was easy to use. It was important for me because one of my target audience is, so I wanted it easy to use for all ages. How it improves the world. This invention improves the world by helping people struggle to get ready. It will save water because you will not have to wash your hands after doing your hair every kids use it, get ready by themselves. Adults get ready if they're in a rush to go to work. One takes one to four minutes. Who would buy it? People that would buy this invention were dads who want their kids to get ready independently, kids that gel their hair, barbers and hairstylists, and male or female who gets their hair, who gels their hair, keep getting it sticky with gel. I would sell this invention for $19.99 because my invention costs $13, and I hope you like my invention. Here's the
Up all night again? Studying? Hate getting ready in the morning? Sick of making a mess? You need a cool comb. Just squeeze for gel. You need a cool comb.
And now, I'm going to demonstrate how to use the cool comb. First, you're going to want to
I said, that's the video he sent to the state of Connecticut for semifinals. From there, he and three others made it to finals at UConn last May, end of May, beginning of June. And then, so that group now goes, he's the only one from Enfield that is moving forward to go to Michigan this year. So it's June 5th through the 9th. So.
Do you have any questions?
Okay, Mr. Ryder, go first.
I have two quick questions for you, Cameron. First of all, I think that's great. Great job, and I like the commercial.
Thank you.
You mentioned teaming up with a high school student named Ryan.
Yes.
Is that something that we do where the young inventors are teaming up with some of our high school students? And could you tell me how that occurred?
Um, so, well, one of my fourth grade teachers, her name is Ms. Bruce. She knew Ryan, and then she was messaging Ryan on Teams.
Okay.
And then they, we were also talking, and then me and Ryan ended up meeting at the library, and like I was showing him all the information about it, and we were just talking about like the different like materials and stuff that we would need to build it, and then we were planning on building it.
I think that's great. And my other question is, do you have a patent attorney?
I hope so.
You hope so, okay. Those are my two questions. Thank you, and congratulations.
Okay, Mr. Genitis?
Can we get a second one free if we just pay shipping and handling?
I'll think about it. Think about it.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Ms. Pickett.
Cameron, really nice job. Thank you, Ms. Beebe, for your support of this program and the staff who support the program. Ms. Bruce, I know you were just mentioned, this is an intensive after-school club that requires not only student support, but family support. So, thank you for your hard work. Are you planning on going to the nationals, and how can we support that?
Um, yes, I'm planning to, on going to Michigan, and me and my family, we are actually doing a fundraiser for collecting cans.
Advertise. Tell us all about it. When, where, what can we do?
Um, so, all you have to do is donate cans, and then we'll turn the cans and
So that fundraiser has been canned. Because ETLA kind of has the, the gamut on that. They go to all the schools and collect all the cans. So at this time, I have elicited a few donations from both the teachers' union and the admin union and USA Hauling. They have given a donation for him, and we're also in the works and speaking with the PTOs of all the schools to see how we can move forward with something else to help the family.
Awesome. If you're doing some fundraising, I know we have a contact here, so please let us know whatever fundraising you do decide to do, or if there's a way to make some donations, just let us know so we can publicly share that. Cameron, good luck to you. I'm sure you will represent Enfield well and keep up the good work.
Go ahead, Ms. Akri.
I remember from the invention convention, and I remember your first comb, and so to see how you've developed it into what you've developed it now, I think it was important that you talked about problem solving. And I honestly, I thought of Mr. Ryder because it said, "Stay up late," and doesn't like to get up in the morning, and his hair's always got to look a certain way. This is for him. But I, just as a mom, I would say, I would love this. I would purchase this because it gets all over the bathroom counter or wherever the kids are doing their hair. So as a mom, I would definitely purchase it. I'm excited for you to go to Michigan and see what you can do out there. I'm sure it's going to be exciting to see all the other inventions out there as well. So congratulations for making it this far, and good luck to you in Michigan.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Akri.
Good luck, Cameron, in Michigan, and congratulations on your achievement, your creativity for this, your innovation for the cool comb. As you know, I'm the liaison for Crandall, so I'm very proud of you. All right? So good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Anyone else? Okay, so Cameron, so the, this right here is the first initial prototype?
Yes, this is my first prototype.
Gotcha. So when you go to Michigan, are you going to bring both the prototype and the final, or just the final?
I think I'm going to bring both, to show them my first prototype and then, like, almost the finished product.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think it'd be, I think the judges would love to see what I first started off, too.
Does the finished product work as expected?
Yes.
Cool. Awesome. That's a really great idea. It reminds me, and I'm probably going to date myself, of those brushes that we had when I was a little kid that had like a hairspray thing on the end of it. But this is better because it comes right out of the teeth. That's even better.
Ours came out of the handle.
Ours just came out of the handle, yeah. Yep. That's, that's very creative. I'm super proud of you. It's very awesome. So I wish you all the best in Michigan, and I hope when you come back from Michigan, that maybe next year you could tell us all about what happened while you were there.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you to everyone that came to support Cameron tonight. Ryan did come from the high school. It's Ryan Dennis. He's the one who met with him, and then also the teachers, Ms. James and Ms. Bruce McGuire, too.
Awesome. Thank you, Ryan. That's awesome. Very cool. All right. Yes. Glad. Okay, Mr. Dreszek, the next board guest star, Enfield High student.
They are. Just want to comment. Cameron, you also won the award for best sneakers ever worn to a board meeting. Colleagues, Mr. Ryder. We also have some additional special guests this evening, and at this point, I'd like to welcome our 23-24 Teacher of the Year, Mr. Armando Ramos, and our Enfield High School students, who I'll allow him to do the introductions because I don't want to blow anything. Unless you don't want to, I can, but. Yo, okay. Come on up. Oh, we're going to leave Mr. Ramos right behind. Come on up, William. It's going for the dramatic moment, William, but you beat me.
Hello, so I am William Bergman. I am a athlete, a Unified Sports athlete, and, yeah, so this is
I'm Brennan. I'm a senior at Enfield High, and I'm a helper.
Oh, yes, and I'm a junior.
All right, I just want to say thank you to the school board for inviting Brennan and Will tonight to honor their amazing work in Unified Sports. These two students are exemplars in Unified, in our Unified Sports program, and I'm so happy to speak on their behalf as their coach. In our Enfield High School Unified program, we are blessed to have many students who demonstrates qualities of kindness, included in leadership. But these two young men have stood out and have made Enfield High School a better place to live. They have been selected to represent our program at the state level as winners of the excellence in Unified Sports, and will be honored at the prestigious Michael's Cup Unified Sports banquet at the end of the month. Brennan is a senior who was selected for this award for his dedication to inclusion during his time as a partner. Watching Brennan work with students with special needs is just amazing. You would think he was a seasoned teacher, coach, when watching him work with his teammates. Brennan is patient, kind, and so natural when working with his teammates. It's apparent to see that he deeply cares about his teammates. Another reason why Brennan was selected for this honor was because of his leadership. Brennan not only led our Unified team in countless school-wide inclusion campaigns during his four years in Unified, but he also led the varsity soccer team as their captain this fall. Most seniors who play Unified as underclassmen opt out by their senior year due to early release from school for jobs, social events, and various other reasons, but not Brennan. Brennan chose to stay at the school at the end of the day and continue his work with Unified. When you have a student like Brennan who is a natural leader schoolwide and commands respect and admiration from all of his classmates, his positive influence on the school culture has been priceless. Will, Will Bergman, has also had an incredible journey. I've had the privilege to watch him grow into a confident and courageous young man who has been a champion for students with special needs. I first met Will in my adaptive PE class, and I was immediately impressed by his intelligence and insightfulness. That first year, he was unsure of his skills, and it took him a little bit before he became comfortable with the idea of joining the Unified team. Once he did, there was no turning back, and he quickly became an amazing advocate for students with special needs. Will has a unique way of expressing himself, where he's honest, vulnerable, and very compelling. He was able to articulate the struggles of students with autism in a way that was not only relatable, but also incredibly beautiful. Because of his outstanding work in advocacy in Unified, it wasn't long before Will was chosen by the EHS administration to attend the Hobie Leadership Seminar, and also chosen by the National Federation of High Schools to attend various leadership summits all over the country. His work on the national stage also earned him a spot on the National Student Advisory Council for a two-year appointment. I have seen some of his heartfelt speeches at these summits, and I am confident to say that his influence is far-reaching, and his positive impact has been felt nationally. In conclusion, I would like to thank Brennan and Will for their inspiration for the, in the last few years. Although I am their teacher and their coach, it is safe to say that I have learned more from them that they have learned from me. Congratulations, Brennan and Will.
Well, does anybody have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Ms. Pickett.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ramos, for those really thoughtful and kind words about our two amazing students. Thank you both for your commitment to creating an inclusive school community. I do have a couple of questions for you both. Is it Brendan or Brennan?
Brennan.
Brennan.
Okay. What is your plan for after high school?
I'm going to college to play soccer at Massachusetts College of Liberal Arts, and I'm doing marketing.
Marketing.
But I want to stay helping out with Unified, and maybe, like, do the Unified Sports and just keep helping out.
Awesome. Any way we could attract you into maybe becoming a teacher?
Maybe, maybe. I have thought about it.
Sorry, I heard some amazing skills there. Thank you for your dedication and commitment to continuing to support our community and being so involved. Will, I got a question for you, too, if you don't mind.
Yes.
All right. What is your favorite part of participating in Unified Sports, and why is it important to you?
So, my personal favorite part of participating in Unified Sports is just seeing how the athletes excel, to be honest. There's a specific student in mind that I've seen him struggle, and I've seen him just find his place. And I was on the Unified Travel Basketball team, and this student, just, I could tell because when I started it, the first year with him, he was kind of hesitant, didn't really want to show really who he was. But as he got more comfortable with his teammates and his peers, he really excelled. And that's just something that, it just, it makes you feel really good that, you know, you were able to influence somebody in such a positive way, and that's why I do what I do.
Thank you so much, Will, and I hope you continue next year as well.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Go ahead, Ms. Akri.
I just would like to congratulate the boys. Brennan, for your dedication, for your caring, support, kindness, I heard all of that when they were talking about you, and your intellect also. Good job, and good luck in college next year. Brennan, also for your intellect determination and your leadership, leadership skills. Thank you, boys, for doing a great job.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Ms. Black.
I just have a question, a couple of questions. So, Will, you got to travel and go to the leadership conferences. How did you find that? Did you enjoy it? Did you feel overwhelmed? Because that's a, that was a lot of, that's a lot of honor and responsibility.
Yeah, it was a very enjoyable experience. The first time I went, I went with a close friend of mine, Jacob Barnes.
Oh, yes.
And we were together, and that really helped me kind of be a bit more comfortable, especially going with a very close friend. And that kind of helped me kind of find my place. And apparently, some of the people there nominated me to be on the National Federation of High Schools National Student Advisory Council. Now, that is something that I did go alone on, and it was kind of nerve-wracking at first, but it's one of the things where, when you go to an event like that or a meeting like that, you notice that you're not the only person that has these values and these skill sets. So you kind of, you're able to create relationships that you, you really value because these people have similar stories, not the exact same, that would just be boring, but stories that are similar to you, struggles that are similar to you. So you really are able to make a lot of connections.
That's excellent. I know for me, I can feel intimidated traveling and traveling alone, and, which may be surprising because, you know, I sit up here, but those situations can be extremely intimidating. I wanted to ask you, are you still playing an instrument?
Um, I am kind of on the side. So because when the Unified, or sorry, United Sound turned into a class, unfortunately for me, I wasn't able to work into my schedule with the other classes that I wanted to attend. But a friend of my father's is teaching me about guitar, so I do some instrument stuff on the side.
Great. Brennan, I just wanted to say congratulations on your choice of what you're doing after high school. I would love for you to come back and teach, right? I mean, come on.
We need this, right?
But I do appreciate your dedication because I know playing soccer and then being the captain is definitely a lot of work, I think more so than people understand when you're a captain. I do want to say something as well, and it's just kind of a testament to your family. Maddie is also involved in Unified Sports, correct? So Brennan's sister is involved in Unified Sports, and she's a great presence there as well. I was excited when I found out you're going to be honored here tonight because you're definitely a student athlete, you're definitely a great leader, and we really appreciate students like you and Will in our school community because you do make a difference without even knowing what a difference that you guys make every day, and I couldn't be more proud.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Go ahead, Mr. Genitis.
Will, thank you. I mean, Brennan, thank you very much for what you do, and Will, you're a beautiful speaker.
Anybody else? Okay, so Brennan, my question to you, since Amanda already asked, William, what do you enjoy and get the most satisfaction out of participating in Unified Sports?
I like to make people happy. I enjoy seeing everyone happy and having a good time, because if I can make them happy just a little bit, it makes my day even better. It's a thing I love doing the most, and just giving everyone a friend that they can talk to whenever they need. And it makes just me happy being there all the time. Getting to know Will and Mr. Ramos and all of the class is so enjoyable, and I want to do it forever.
That's awesome. Oh, my gosh. You guys are awesome. Top 10 made my day. That's awesome. I guess the other question that I have is, what's, do you, do you play all the sports, or do you just do like basketball, soccer, and I'm guessing baseball, maybe? Or do, what do you, do all of them?
I used to do all of them, baseball, basketball, soccer, but then I chose to do soccer because I play premier soccer, too, so I didn't have enough time to play all those sports, too.
Yeah. Yep. And then, William, what do you play for Unified Sports? What teams you?
So specifically, I play the Unified Travel Basketball. But I'm unfortunately not part of the class anymore because of scheduling issues, but Coach Ramos will reach out to my dad if there's a specific event he thinks that I would excel at, and I will participate in certain events when they come up.
Awesome. Awesome. Well, Mr. Dreszek, we have some phenomenal people up here. Thank you for having them come, and I'm so amazed by you guys and really proud. Thank you for coming. You're awesome. Okay. All right, I think we're done now. We can, we can go home. All right. Number seven, superintendent's report. Mr. Dreszek.
Okay, who wants to start? Illy, you want to start? Go ahead. You came right from a track meet. You get to
Number seven, Superintendent's Report. Mr. Drazek.
Okay, who wants to start? Illy, you want to start? Go ahead. You came right from a track meet. You get the question.
Okay. So actually, I guess, speaking of track, the track and field team had a very cool experience that we got to participate in last Wednesday. We were competing in a track meet that was a quad meet, so it consisted of East Hartford, EoSmith, Ram, and we got to compete against a team from New Zealand, which it was a very fun experience. And we ended up winning against EoSmith Ram in New Zealand. So it was a huge conference meet that we walked away with the W's of, so I thought I'd talk about that. Lamplighters this weekend is performing Mary Poppins on Friday and Saturday in the auditorium. The Friday show was at 7:00 PM and the Saturday shows are at 2:00 and 7:00. Tomorrow, the eighth graders are visiting JFK to see like what we have to offer and all of that, and I'll be helping with that too, so I'm excited for that. The Enfield Arts Show was this past weekend on Friday and Saturday in the cafeteria. Thank you for all those who came out and supported. And then Buzz Robotics this past weekend also had competed in the world championship in Houston, Texas.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry, excuse my voice. So for our in-school report, the EHS Annual Awards and Scholarship Night is coming up on May 20th in the auditorium from 6:30 to 8:30. And then we have a senior informational meeting also coming up. It's regarding senior activities. That's on April 26th. April 29th is our class officers election. So this is for our student council officers, and that's from 7:30 to 2 o'clock in school on Microsoft Forms. Students will receive an email. I know, I'm running, so it's a little nerve-wracking for all of us. The 19th to 20th, oh, Izzy made this document. There's a little mistake on it. The arts festival already happened. Kayla said that. On April 18th, the SAT scores came out for juniors, and juniors are free to retake the SATs in the summer going into senior year, in the fall of senior year, if you want to get a better score. The English department is participating in daily poem announcements each day for the month of April for poem appreciation month. And then we also just want to remind everybody that new scholarships are always available for juniors and seniors prepping for college. So check in with guidance and your College Board app for any scholarships available. Thank you, everyone.
All right.
Thank you, Chairman.
And did you really say New Zealand? Like, like for real? Wow. That's pretty cool. That's awesome. Very cool.
We didn't get to go on a field trip that far, right?
No. Serious.
No one's interested in anything I have to say.
No, not tonight.
Which I'm cool with. So I'll just be quick. There's an early release day with lunch on tomorrow, April 24th, for half staff PD day. It's a reminder that the town council will hold a public hearing on the 2425 budget. Residents and board members are encouraged to attend. There's a quorum agenda in your packet. And because you have a rather lengthy agenda tonight, I'll leave you with this. One of the items under new business is about starting a search committee. And if you guys had half a brain, you would stop Brennan and Will before they leave the room because you probably can just get them to fulfill that job and skip the whole process. So that concludes the superintendent's report.
All right. Audiences. We have, okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. So I'm not going to read the whole thing, but the rules changed a couple of last month. So any resident taxpayer of Enfield, employee of the board, or stakeholder in our school system may address the board here. All speakers must identify themselves by full legal name and their relationship to the district, and four minutes will be allotted to each speaker. All right, so first up is Robbie Anderson.
The idea of transparency has been brought up a number of times. There's a large public mistrust of the BOE and the school administration. Transparency is the only way to gain back that trust. And that goes for both sides of the aisle. It's not just, it's not just one. The school superintendent search committee, I've heard that the makeup of it is going to be an even number of people. Not sure if that's true, but that's what I've heard. I'm not sure why a committee would have an even number of people. This board, town council, every other committee I've, I'm aware of, always has an odd number of people. So maybe you could explain the current plan to everybody and with some transparency. It might help, help us to understand where you guys are coming from. How are you going to be finding people to interview? Who's going to be finding these people? I've also heard that there might be a survey going out to staff for input on a new super. Why do you think that's a good idea? That'd be a lot of time and energy, be very inefficient. And that's time and energy that can be put towards finding a new super. Most times when you ask employees what they want in a boss, that's not going to be the right answer for who the boss needs to be. If you ask a group of people, they're going to be worried about, I want someone I'm going to like, I want someone that's not going to make my life difficult. That's pretty much going to be it. They're not going to necessarily know what they need in a leader. They know what they want in a leader, but what someone wants in a leader and what someone needs in a leader are two different things. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay. Maureen Griffin, you are up next.
Maureen Griffin, I'm a mom in town of several children in the school district. And the idea of a survey going out to the families and the staff, I happen to think it's the most appropriate thing in the world because we know what our children need, the staff knows what's going on in the schools. And staff that I've met, they're not worried about going out and having a drink with somebody after school, after school. They're not worried about whether they like the superintendent. They're worried about can they address the needs of the children? Do they have the skills? So enough of that. I actually came here to talk about the superintendent search. Anyway, you guys all got an email. But this is to the general town as well as you guys. Take a moment or more to reflect upon the past several years and how our superintendent, admin, and teachers have been approached with various concerns. There has been so much character assassination and abuse that we have lost, Chris, a loss. I know some people don't agree. And Andy, who has experience from the bottom up and out, has decided that he does not want to put himself in the firing line. And who can blame him? What are the chances that we have any, no less multiple applicants to choose from with all the notoriety that our district has unfortunately gotten? If we do get lucky, the person will likely see as a stepping stone, not as a district in which to put down roots. We'll be right back to searching again. It's not a game. Get over your egos. Our kids and education is too important to be used for games. What do we do now? You can't change what's happened. You can reflect upon everyone's, all of us, including me, actions and how we have either supported the schools or torn them down. Have we helped or hindered the district? You can commit to focusing on your job as members of the Board of Ed, this is for you guys, and the real responsibilities that you have. Go to the CAPE website and read what your job is, please, not your crusades. And finally, you can remember the golden rule and treat others, even those you vehemently disagree with, with dignity and respect. I think it would be a good idea, and it would be a great example for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Okay. All right, next up is number nine, board member comments. Who would like to go first this evening? Mr. Ryder?
So one thing, I apologize, Mr. Drazek, if you mention this, but tomorrow's an early release day. I know everybody probably got the robocall and/or emails, tweets, or texts about that, but I just wanted to remind everybody about that. Also, today was School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. I was happy to go to JFK in the morning, as I've done for a couple of years, wearing my school bus yellow, and waving to our bus drivers and through the PTOs, encouraging all of the schools, staff, students, and families to say thank you to our bus drivers, which we do the fourth Tuesday of every April. I just want to thank all of you guys. You get our most precious cargo, our kids, our children, to those who are parents, and our students, to those we're not related to, to and from school every day, and we appreciate that. I was asked recently what we had planned for School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. And something that we wanted to share with everybody was that we encourage our Enfield Public Schools' family, staff, and neighbors to make cards, lawn signs, or speak or share words of gratitude to our amazing school bus drivers on Tuesday, April 23rd, which is this year's fourth Tuesday of April. We've been doing this annually for several years now, on our school drivers, School Bus Drivers Appreciation Day. It's a town-wide chance to say thank you to our partners in education at Smith Bus. School bus drivers get our most precious cargo, our students and our children, to and from school every day, to and from field trips, athletic and cultural events, and more. Most drivers are also parents themselves, and many of them are our Enfield neighbors. Another example of showing our appreciation is that we try to gather at JFK because that's where 90% of the bus runs go through, and to get a chance to wave to our Smith Bus friends. And we get a great joy out of doing that, and I hope that they appreciated it. So it's just a day for all of us to take a moment to show our appreciation. The other thing I wanted to mention before we do our school liaison reports later in the meeting was I wanted to give everybody an update on the project that our current kid mayor was working on for us. Again, Gabby Diaz, our kid mayor, who currently matriculates at Eli Whitney, has created her own mental health platform, her communication flags. And I have a sample of one here. So this is a prototype that she's been working on. So if you have the green flag up on your desk, it says, "I'm working fine, I'm doing well today." Yellow, "I need help, but I can keep working." And red is, "I need help, and I cannot keep working, at least at this pace. I need a short break." All the supplies that were used, that Gabby is working on putting together, were funded through Donors Choose. And we wanted to thank all the parents and donors and Gabby herself for this idea and for not only coming up with this idea, similar to Cameron earlier with his invention. She didn't just pitch it and walk away from it for somebody else to be like, okay, well, how will we do that? How will we put that together? She figured it out herself. And with the help of our staff and our friends at Eli Whitney, these are some of the prototypes that we are, that we are working with. "I need help, but I, but I can keep working." And it's also yellow, so I'm going to leave that up there for our friends at Smith Bus as well. So thank you, everybody. That's, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody want to go next? Ms. Pickett?
Sure. I'll forewarn everybody, I got lots of comments tonight. I don't know if it feels like we haven't had a meeting in a while, maybe with the April break, but I do have a lot. So I'm going to begin my comments by addressing some very problematic and harmful public comments that were made last week at the town council meeting. First, our mayor made very inappropriate comments about spanking children and shared inaccurate information regarding our special education students. Let me be clear, I understand that talking about education lingo and funding is challenging. However, accurate information was shared multiple times with the mayor, and he continues to share harmful misinformation. I actually received a phone call from the news before I came here tonight. So because of this, I believe that it's important to share facts with the public. According to EdSite Public Data, last year, 20.3% of our students were identified as having special needs. This means they went through a rigorous process that provides them with an IEP, an Individualized Education Plan, a federally legally protected document of their supports and services. We get specific funding for special education. It is never 100% reimbursed by the state. However, we have received about 70% reimbursement for, and we use those funds for special ed students only. On the other hand, 58% of our students are considered in the high-need category. This is a very different thing. High needs is a percentage of students who qualify for free or reduced lunch, are multilingual students, and/or are students with an IEP or special needs. This term is used by the Connecticut State Department of Ed as a way to disaggregate our data and understand the potential barriers that students may face. Personally, I struggle with the term of high needs because it's important that we remember that just because a student might qualify for free or reduced lunch or be a multilingual learner, doesn't mean that they require additional academic supports or services. In fact, our high-need students perform almost in line with their counterparts, or some even above. I also want to be clear that as a district, we receive additional state and federal funding to support services that impact our high-need students, funding for things like our meal programs or our English as a second language services. This additional money is separate from special ed funding. As far as our growing population of students with special ed needs or students with an IEP, this isn't new. This number has been steadily increasing, and we are in this position not because we have amazing special ed services, it's because we have never fully or adequately funded the needs of our students and our staff. I'm going to ask you to please correct me if I'm wrong here, Mr. Drazek or anybody on this board, but during COVID, Superintendent Drazek was able to use the temporary funds to provide crisis response, things like iPads and masks and other emergency needed services. He was also able to get staffing that he has never gotten the financial backing for, staff like behavior tech, social work, additional Paris. Staffing was an allowable expense, unlike restrictions on our town funds. Mr. Drazek knew that those funds had an expiration date on them, so he sustainably planned for those funds since they have never been supported by our Board of Education or our town before. So he put those funds for the additional staffing that we require into our operating budget and switched it out with our security budget line item. This is how we got in the armed guard situation. It is clear that the town will invest in that, but not the necessary supports for our students. If the town council wants to make a difference in our special education data and funding, we need to have a much more comprehensive conversation. Maybe we could be more cost-effective in our, sorry, we need to have a more comprehensive conversation. We need to discuss our neglected elementary facilities and our modernization plan. Maybe we can be more cost-effective in our programming design with a K5 model. Maybe we can provide the research-based safety and security measures like automatic locking classroom doors, secure vestibule entries, and security cameras that can be monitored instead of 22 armed security guards. We need long-term solutions. This shouldn't be a partisan conversation. I welcome a collaborative discussion on our needs and developing sustainable solutions that support our community. The short-term Band-Aids of roofs and guards and cutting education budget isn't going to work, neither will just expanding specialized programming. Mayor Nelson has also continuously shared that he was responding to erroneous comments by a member of the public about possible discriminatory discipline and arrest data. In regards to that, I've come here as a mom before I ever sat up here as a board member with concerns about the same data. We should be concerned about our disproportionate suspension, expulsion, and arrest data. We should welcome feedback from concerned citizens, and we should be carefully looking at this, especially as the town is adding 22 new armed guard positions to our police force. And then, Mr. Genites, you made a comment about a woke agenda and curriculum. This frustrates me to no end. We have been working incredibly collaboratively on the curriculum committee. We have had courageous and honest conversations. So if you believe that inappropriate content is in our curriculum, I would love to know what you're referencing. As a committee, we have extensively reviewed our health curriculum and standards and recently selected a new textbook. recently selected a new textbook. We have reviewed the Black and Latino history course and had a public Board of Ed presentation on social-emotional learning. So, what is it that you're referencing, and what exactly are your concerns? As elected officials, I believe it's imperative for us to share factual information with constituents, the media, and on any public microphone. If you aren't sure what to say or what you're talking about, saying nothing works best. So, now, on to my community news and updates. Progress reports are also going to be issued to families on April 30th. I encourage you to check those out. I was able to attend the art show. My son had a piece in there. I thank you to all of the community partners it takes to put on that art show, not only our student artists, but the staff, the Women's League, Enfield Cultural Arts was there, students were there, and it's an amazing event. Thank you so much. I do have some questions to the Chair, to the Superintendent regarding the vision of a graduate. It's my understanding that we're having some focus groups with our schools. Are all schools having focus groups? Yes. Do we know what the attendance of those are like yet, or how many have happened? No. So, we don't know the attendance yet, we don't know how many have happened. I do know last night, my husband attended the one for Enfield Street School in Parkman. He said how well it was facilitated by our admin team, so thank you to the admin who are putting those together. I was a little concerned about how many families actually showed up, so I do wonder if we are considering other strategies to gain family and community input on the vision of a graduate. I know Kite could be an amazing partner, or PTOs can probably be amazing partner. I also know schools have many events planned, so maybe there's an easy way that we could get feedback on the vision of a graduate through those upcoming events. I also have some public comments I want to make, and I hope are addressed in Joint Security Committee. Ms. Gerard asked some very important questions at the Town Council and shared some concerns about the impact of the guards leaving in our current security protocols, along with the budget of this plan. It's my understanding that we still don't have an MOU, yet we are spending money and hiring. It's my hope that the Joint Security Committee will carefully review this MOU and ensure careful attentions paid to the role in student behavior interactions, inappropriate and required training and protocols. I'd also ask that we continue to review dismissal procedures at our schools, especially the high school, and how our security program will support that. I'm wondering if we have an update on the new sign that was supposed to go by Enfield Street School and possibly other signage. I'm incredibly thankful for our youth services in our town and our high school collaboration. They're facilitating the distribution of 50 brand-new dresses with tags for senior prom in need. These dresses were donated to Enfield by the Anna Grace Project, an organization that does beautiful and impactful work in communities in honor of Anna Grace, who lost her life in Newtown. This means a lot to me personally, and I'm incredibly thankful to the Anna Grace Project and Alexandra's Boutique for their generous donation and selecting Enfield. Anna's mom made this statement public about the donation, and her words are, "I pray for your children the same quality and excellence you want for your children." These new with tag gowns will be donated to young people in the town of Enfield in recognition of Amanda, who writes messages on Wednesdays for the Anna Grace Project and was Isaiah and Anna's former babysitter. This distribution makes me extra glad, because Anna Grace loved a wide variety of people, and a wide variety of people will receive these dresses. As mentioned in our moment of silence, Enfield Street School lost a beloved staff member.
Trish was a building sub at our school. She knew every staff member. She knew every student. She impacted so many people with her positive spirit, her humor, and her genuine care and empathy. Unfortunately, I didn't get to know Trish personally very well, but I know her most through the stories of my daughter, her friends, and the staff that have worked most closely with her. I was lucky enough to have limited personal interactions with her, and those left lasting imprints on me. She always reached out with words of encouragement and gratitude. To me, that's her legacy, and is something that we can all emulate. She loved out loud. People who knew her felt her love and knew exactly how she felt about them. Let's honor her by doing that more.
Thank you, Ms. Pickett. Anybody else would like to go next? Go ahead, Ms. Akri.
I would like to thank Gabby for her mental health project that she's working on. Thank you, since I'm on the Mental Health Committee. I'd like to brag about, I attended, also attended the annual arts festival Friday night. I was very impressed with the students' artwork. Their artwork showed their talent, their skills, their artistry, their creativity. I really enjoyed looking at the artwork that was represented, from the little elementary students all the way up to the seasoned high school artists at Enfield High. I would also like to congratulate Mr. Powers and the JFK Jazz Band that performed that night. They did a wonderful job performing, and kudos to the band, the teacher, and the talented soloists. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Akri. Anybody like to go next? Go ahead, Mr. Coburn.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I do want to be relatively brief tonight. I know we have a lot on the agenda to talk about, so, and we just talked about it during the moment of silence. I know Mrs. Pickett mentioned it, so I just personally want to express my condolences to the loss of our staff member, and our significant others in the audience. It is a tragic loss, obviously, to the community and everybody involved. Also, I do want to echo what Mr. Ryder said, that today is School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, so, on a positive note, obviously, we thank our bus drivers and all you do to transport students and keep them safe. I do want to briefly address, I know the Board did get a lot of correspondence, both the Board and the Council regarding discipline and arrest data. Tying into one of the themes I talk about, transparency, I do just want to let people know that the Board does receive monthly reports from the administration. The reports are sanitized, we don't see student names, we don't see demographics or anything like that, but I think one of the concerns, and, you know, obviously, things can be worded better, but possibly, I think, the intent of what the mayor was trying to relay is that some of the arrests that we see are warranted, and if we just look at our March report, it looks like there was three or four arrests, and they're all termed as, you know, fighting, altercation, physical aggression. Physical altercation is another reason, engaging in physical violence. So, if you look at this disaggregated, I mean, these are things you would hope would be a non-discretional arrest. I mean, there's a lot of other things that result in suspens and expulsions, you know, inciting a fight, fighting, and stuff like that. So, we don't have the full details, but, you know, this is to at least reassure the public that the Board does get this information at a monthly disaggregated level, so we do have some visibility to it. Last point I just want to touch on, you know, I talked about it last meeting, and I kind of want to follow up every meeting, is just talking about the Transparency Initiative. You know, this is going to be like a holistic approach, obviously, on the Board side, working in conjunction with the administration, as something for, you know, better public trust, confidence, a more transparent budget process, you know, even tying this into where we talk about discipline and arrest data. You know, something like this may be of use for the public to see how many students are getting expelled, what they're getting expelled for. I know the Board gets this information, I don't know the confidentiality of it in terms of being publicly posted, but that might be something this initiative could look at. Again, there's no names, there's no demographic data, but it does indicate this is what the staff is up against, for lack of a better term, in the schools, and disruption to the classroom, where, you know, if there is physical aggression, it makes sense that students are getting arrested. You know, same thing if it was two adults at Big Y. You know, you would hope that an arrest would be made if something like that happened. So, this is a particular example. Obviously, you know, I've expressed my concerns previously in the budget. I know there's some policy proposals, a lot of this will be coming through Committee. I did reach out across the aisle to get bipartisan support. Obviously, I think we're, you know, we're all here to make positive change, so I'm hoping we can move it forward. You know, I've said before, nothing happens overnight. I mean, government moves at government's pace, but this is going to be a long-term project during this term that I want to implement, and get us to a stronger, more, a stronger spot of, again, public trust, confidence, and visibility, and that may mitigate some of the questions that we do receive as public officials. So, with that being said, everything else I'll address as it comes up on the agenda. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Blake.
Just a few things I have this evening. I also attended the art show, and you can buy handmade bowls by the students, and you can put soup in it, and all that money is donated to charity. Last year, I bought three, this year, I bought six. I couldn't wait to get there. I think I cleaned them out. I can't wait to use those bowls. They're great for charcuterie, anything, little snacks. I do have to give a shout out to JFK, their Monopoly game, which was the whole layout of the school. That was really cool. I loved, you know, the different, instead of go to jail, it was go to ISS, and then they had, you know, all the classes, and then you purchased chairs, and then a desk. That was really, really cool. I'm always in awe of the senior portfolios. I love talking to the seniors and find out what their next plan is, and some of them are super talented artists, but that's not something they want to do for a living. It's something they like to do as an outlet. I just find that their work is very personal, like you're kind of getting a glimpse inside. And I just love, I'm blown away every year by that. Through the Chair, to the Superintendent, if a community group wants to purchase a book, I just want to double-check on the, a community group wants to purchase books for the school, I just want to double-check, should they contact Lisa Snow? I know all the books that are purchased --
Adrian.
Oh, sorry. What did I say?
Lisa.
Lisa Snow.
Or full or sister Adrian.
Yeah. I know all books have to be vetted, but is that the appropriate person that this community group should contact?
Adrian and Michelle, yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Also, thank you to all of our bus drivers. You guys are amazing, and you're often the first smiling face that the kids see in the morning, so I appreciate that. That first face in the morning makes all the difference for a day. April is Autism Awareness Month. It's important to raise awareness about autism acceptance and promote inclusion and connectedness for people with autism, but more importantly, their families as well. Social and community support is extremely important, even beyond Enfield Public Schools. One in 54 children in the U.S. are diagnosed with autism with early intervention, Dr. Jerry, inclusion and acceptance. This can make a great deal of benefit in our students' lives. It's important to note that autism is not a mental or an emotional illness, it is a developmental disability. It begins during early development, either prenatal or by the age of three, which, when we talk about Trish Boucher, I actually wrote this because I got it in the mail today. She actually wrote a book, and she talks about what it's like to be a mom of an autistic student. So, if you are interested, you can Google the book and see if it's a fit for you, if you're a mom or caregiver of someone who's autistic. It is always Trish's spin on things, so it is going to make you smile and laugh. I would be willing to also loan this out, but any community support or listening to somebody who's going through what you're going through is amazing, so I just wanted to say that about Trish. And then, Mr. Coburn, I promised you a discussion. So, one of the discussions we were talking about was how our budget, we'll say, our approved and proposed budget are always like in the 73 million, but then, when you look on the State Department website, you'll see, for example, you saw 95 million. So, I had done some research on that. And also, Amanda had reached out to a non-political group regarding, you know, how the state looks at per pupil spending. So, I might have to get Mr. Dreszek involved in the conversation, but when we look at this number of the 95 million, and I know it can be confusing, this is the number that the Board of Ed or the Central Office is submitting to the state, which includes buildings and grounds and other in-kind services, so that we can figure out a correct per pupil spending. So, the 95 million isn't just what we're approving as our Board. And when you look in the town budget book, you'll see that it's 73 million, and I think we talked about it at a meeting back in March about in-kind services and how we figure out per pupil spending. So, that's where that disparity is, as far as that number goes. So, I know that that was one of the discussions we wanted to have. So, if you wanted to discuss that further, I'd be happy to. If we want to learn more about in-kind services or what the town, what we send, I'd be happy to work on that with you. So, I just wanted to, I told you, we would talk about it tonight at the microphone in honor of transparency, because I thought, rather than going back and forth via email, would be important. I also wanted to share the email that Amanda got. She sent it to the Town Council, and it talks about comparing the budgets and what is going in on the State Department. It's actually a really good document, because you just feel like you're just not getting a legislator's perspective on things. I also wanted to talk to you about, and if somebody from my caucus feels like they want to step in, we got your email regarding the Enfield BOE Transparency Initiative, and so you asked that we share it with the caucus and talk about it as a caucus, and I guess some of the concerns that were brought up is that if we were going to do this at the Board of Ed level, should this be something we were doing at the town level? Like, it should be an Enfield initiative and not maybe an Enfield Board of Ed initiative? So, I don't know your thoughts on that, or if that's something you considered. So, we're kind of, just kind of...
Yeah, I'll be super brief. I mean, I hadn't considered that yet, and I would be open to it, so it might be something we could partner with Council. I mean, I wouldn't, my perspective is I wouldn't hens us not doing something, waiting for someone else to do it, but I think that would be an important, as I mentioned, a holistic approach, and that may be a good option to explore, so I would be open to that.
All right. So, that was like the first step in our discussion as our caucus regarding that, and then we were going to bring it up this evening. And was there one more thing, Mr. Coburn, I wanted to talk to you about? Oh, I know what I want to talk to you about. So, I just wanted to kind of show the Board something, because we were having the conversations about the Munis Report, about what happens in the Finance Committee, and like if we have a system. And so, in the Finance Committee, we do get a copy of the Munis Report, which is this, and it's kind of a roll-up of everything in the accounting, budgeting workshops. So, we do get this, and it just kind of classifies the salaries, certified salaries, and then I believe there's drill downs, but we do get this, and this is what we certify every month. So, I just want to see, the last half-day at Enfield High, we did have police officers there, which was extremely helpful, so with tomorrow being a half-day, it would be great if we could have a police officer there, but I understand, I'm not telling them what to do, I'm just saying it was very helpful, and it was very much appreciated by the Enfield High staff and bus drivers. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. And actually, I think I will end with the super search. I do think it's important for staff input. I do believe the staff is our leaders in our education system, and they would know what to look for more, and it's more or less about a candidate profile, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Chairwoman Riley, than anything. So, I think it is important to get staff input. And that's pretty much all I have. So, thank you, and Mr. Coburn, I look forward to continuing conversations with you.
Mr. Genitis?
I'd like to take this opportunity to wish a happy Passover to Israel and all the Jewish people around the world, and also express my dismay with what's going on on a lot of the Ivy League campuses right now, and it's starting to spread across to some other schools. And finally, as an individual, I stand behind the Jewish people and the people around the world. Shalom. That's all I really wanted to say. Tina and I have not had words in three weeks. We've agreed to try to be more civil to each other, but Amanda, I think I can't help but not respond to some of the things that you said. The mayor, I don't think, is spreading on purpose any misinformation. He may not be fully aware of all the terminology and everything that's going on in the budget, but he's giving his honest assessment, and if you want to take a shot at him, go to the Town Council meeting and say it right to his face. As far as the disproportional arrest rates, that slip of paper that came around comparing us to other towns, I don't know how in the world anybody can comprehend the fact that Waterbury, and Bridgeport, and New Haven, Hartford, and a lot of cities across this state, some of them have zero arrests. I mean, that's just incomprehensible, and for those large cities to be less than us. Do we know from that, we don't know from that information, how many repeat offenders there are, and I would hope we'd get that from the administration, because we do know there are some groups, for lack of a better word, I won't even say it, but there are groups of people, groups of kids, that are constantly getting in trouble, and I think the repetitive rate is something that we really have to know. And in all the years that I taught, and what... And in all the years that I taught and what the teachers I still know, it's, they're not racial. I really don't believe that at all. And I don't believe the cops would want to arrest any kid unless they absolutely have to. It's something that the police just aren't fond of doing. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead, Ms. Dr. Kalman.
So I also wanted to just make a comment about the Arts Festival. I enjoyed it thoroughly, as I do every year. And one of the things that really impressed me this year was the musical component. It was, it was just striking how talented our musicians are, particularly our vocalists. And it was just a very inspiring thing to attend. The other thing I noticed about the art exhibit, and I may be wrong about this, but I think we had some pre-K artists there.
The first.
And this was the first time, correct?
No, they were there last year.
They were there last year, too. So look at how this has spread over the years. It started out as a high school project, and from there, it spread out to involve all of the grades and even the pre-K. And it's really incredible just to watch the evolution of those talents over time. So I thought that was really inspiring and really remarkable. I wanted to take a quick opportunity to talk about, for just a minute, because I know we've got a really busy schedule, but for just a minute, I wanted to touch on something that we, I don't think we've ever really talked about before. But one of the consequences of the COVID epidemic was that vaccination rates have dropped fairly significantly nationwide. And so I just wanted to give a quick reminder to parents to make sure your kids are fully vaccinated. Measles is on the rise nationwide. And measles isn't just a nuisance, it's, it's, there are significant complications to measles, including pneumonia, bronchitis, and encephalitis. And the encephalitis can be very damaging and it can also be life-threatening. And the vaccine for measles is safe and effective. The overwhelming evidence available indicates that the measles vaccine is both safe and effective. And there have been reported cases of polio in the United States. Now, most of those have been due to imported cases, but there was at least one case that was homegrown. So we know that poliovirus is here and we have to keep an eye on that, as well as other communicable diseases which are vaccine preventable. So if you're not sure of your child's vaccine status, call your doctor, but it's really important that your child remains up to date on vaccinations. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kalman. Go ahead, Mr. Genitis.
I missed one sentence. I didn't have my glasses on. To answer your question about liberal slash woke, education in this country, public education, has always, always been subject to liberal points of view. And it's just part of the cycle and it's, for the most part, has been very good for public education. And it's not the standard definition of liberal versus conservative. It's just a liberal way of thinking as far as how we do things in education. If it's been hijacked by what I would now consider maybe a little more radical liberal point of view, and that's where my ideas of, or using the word woke, woke come in. And I'm sure a lot of us have all different opinions exactly what woke means, and obviously ours isn't the same.
Thank you, Mr. Genitis. Does anybody else want to go? Okay. So I have a couple of things. Enfield Public Schools received recognition for one of the best communities for music education. This is the first year that Enfield received this honor, so congratulations to our music department. Definitely well deserved. I also went to the Art Fest this past weekend. Well, I actually went on Friday, which was kind of, Friday was a different kind of a day because first, I ended up going to Wake, which there were children there who were probably having the worst day of their lives. And then you go from that to the Art Fest where some kids are probably having the best day of their lives. So it was a, it was an odd juxtapositioning of things. But I want to give my condolences to the family. Our hearts and prayers are with you and we're here if you need anything. And I want to congratulate those art students. Music, art, and food, all under one roof. I mean, you couldn't have had a better night. It was like the perfect date night, really. Let me tell you, those students with their senior portfolios, I mean, you could walk into like the Metropolitan Museum of Art and those pictures could be hanging on the walls. Like they were phenomenal. So kudos to all of the students who were showcasing the art there, all the way from pre-K up. It was, it was great. I wanted to go back to our last meeting, when you had brought up Maddie from Prunes Crandall had done a project bringing kits to cancer people, cancer patients at the center in Manchester. And I was at my parents' house this weekend and I picked up an ECHN pamphlet that they get, and her picture was in there with a story, so everybody knows. So congratulations again. I wanted to thank the bus drivers. You guys have a special place in my heart. My dad drove a school bus in his retiree years for 15 years. So I know it's definitely not easy being a bus driver. You have to go every year, do a test, you have to like walk around the bus, make sure it's safe, you have to do the whole driving thing, you have to have a DOT physical every year. So it's definitely not, it's not for the faint of heart, really. So you guys, bus drivers are awesome. And I want to give a special shout-out to Ms. Maureen, who's been with our family for seven years now. She is just an amazing driver and she's such a wonderful human being. She brings a smile to our family's face every day. The superintendent search committee, we're voting and talking about that tonight, so anything that you may have or not have heard is basically all a rumor until we figure it out tonight. So you'll be finding out when we do, so stay tuned. And I, I mean, I don't have any intentions of hiding anything. I've been pretty transparent. I just tell you like it is, so stay tuned and we'll figure it out tonight together. And then this is kind of piggybacking off of what Amanda had addressed with high needs, special needs. So some of it's going to be duplicate, but some of it's also going to be a different-ish. So leadership, we went last week to present our budget at the town council's budget deliberation meeting. We had a lengthy conversation about special needs and the various funding mechanisms that go with it. So I just want to clear things up for some on the high needs versus special needs, since it did take some repetition at that meeting to maybe make it clear. It can be confusing. I've heard it mentioned recently in multiple ways by multiple people. So if anybody here or in YouTube lands curious or wants a refresher, so the umbrella term that the state of Connecticut has given, high needs, that is the state of Connecticut's way of lumping three subcategories together for the purposes of reporting, and it's an alliance district indicator. So there's 12 indicators and the scores determine if you should or should not be in alliance district per the state. So you have high needs. The three categories that make up high needs is special needs. Those students in that category have a 504 or an IEP. There's English language learners. Those students, English is not their native language, and thus there's a language learning barrier there. The third subcategory is free and reduced lunch. Those students are in households that receive SNAP or TFA, children in Head Start, homeless children or runaways, and households that fall below the federal income eligibility guidelines. So a general example for this year, you have a family of four, you make less than $39,000 gross per year, you get free meals. If that same family of four makes less than $65,900 gross, then you can apply for reduced meals. So all of those three separate subcategories fall under the umbrella of high needs. So some students fit into one subcategory, some other kids could fit into all three, or they could fit into two. So that's why you just can't add all the percentages up to get that total percent for the main category of high needs. And funding comes from the state of Connecticut for all students with the education cost sharing. However, specifically for the special needs students, the ones with 504s and IEPs, a separate funding from the state comes from what they call excess cost. Excess cost reimburses us once the cost of educating each special needs student is more than four and a half times the standard per pupil cost. So now excess cost was supposed to reimburse all that remaining cost to us, but we still have yet to be funded by the state of Connecticut at 100% of that remaining excess cost, which is why we always say education needs to be fully funded. You can see by the state not fully funding this excess cost by every student that's special needs, it's shorting our school district a lot of money, year after year, in all compounds, which in the end, all of our taxpayers need to make up. Now, if a student's special needs, they should get the services they need. So like I said before, don't take this as I'm highlighting and placing blame on a group. I'm not. I'm just trying to illustrate how the state of Connecticut groups the students and then fails to make good on the laws that are supposed to help us support those students' needs. And unfortunately, as the numbers rise for special needs students, so does the cost to serve them, and then unfortunately, the net money we're supposed to get, shorted by the state, also rises. So we're in a deficit. I didn't think that the state gave extra money for English language learners, but I might be wrong now that you said something.
Additional grants, yes.
Okay. I know that the federal government, specifically the USDA, funds the school breakfast and lunch programs for free and reduced lunch students. And the money from the feds for that can only be used for that and can't be like, if we're in excess, we can't just give it to another department. It has to be staying in that. So basically, high needs is the big category, then you got special needs, English language, and free and reduced lunch. And that's my, oh, and outplacement cost, yes, that goes with the special needs. So, you know, one pupil might cost, one special needs pupil might cost $75,000 versus a regular pupil cost of, I think it's 18-something right now. And then a student that's outplaced to, it could be to a facility, a residential place, private school, those can be in excess of $100,000 or more. So the gamut varies on how much a special needs student costs. It's not like you're special needs, you're going to cost $80,000. It depends on what type of services you need or where you are. So that's my educational moment for the evening. All right? Okay. All right. So next is 10. Unfinished business, policy revision, second reading, which is 6111. Ms. Cushman.
Policy 6111 is being revised to align with current teacher contracts, giving us the flexibility to set the start date for school either before or after Labor Day. And additionally, it adds the phrase "if available" because there is currently not a correct regional calendar, but it would cause us to refer to it when we're making our school calendar, if there is one available. So I would like to make a motion to approve the second reading of policy 6111 as revised.
All right. Motion made by Ms. Cushman, second by Ms. Pickett. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, just to, so I'll echo, I know what the first reading I mentioned, that I am in favor of this revised policy coming to the table, but I would have liked to see a little more parameters on the start date, for example. So I'd still be voting no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kober. Anybody else? Okay, Kathy, roll call, please. Mr. Rider.
Yes.
Mrs. Akri.
Yes.
Dr. Kalman.
Yes.
Ms. Cushman.
Yes.
Mr. Genitis.
No.
Mr. Kober.
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Ms. Pickett.
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. All right. New business, approval of the fiscal year 2025 School Readiness Grant. Mr. Drazek.
Sorry, you guys went too quick. I was chewing my gum. So in your packet is a memo from Amy Morales, who's the Operations Manager for Child and Youth Family Service Division, Enfield School Readiness Liaison, and Carol, and I can never say Carol, Carol, I'm sorry, I can't say her name right, Chairperson of Kite. They're looking for the board's approval for the fiscal year 2425 School Readiness Grant application. The board unanimously approved this grant last year on April 25th. They're looking for your approval for continuation of this grant for next school year as well. And I know that Dr. Kalman was part of that discussion on April 3rd, when they brought it to the School Readiness Council. So if there's anything he'd like to add to that, but this is something that's done on an annual basis, but in order to apply for the grant, it requires board approval.
So you want to do questions first or during the discussion? Do a motion first. All right, so I need a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 School Readiness Grant.
So moved.
Second.
I just want to add, this also has to be approved by the town council. It was unanimously approved by the council on April 15th of this year.
Okay, so motion with Dr. Kalman and a second by Ms. Pickett. Discussion.
Madam Chair, I just have one question and I'm not sure who can answer this, but I know as reading through this, it mentioned that Kite serves as the School Readiness Council. Has it always been that way? Or could just someone explain kind of that overlap?
Yeah, the OEC, oh, I'm sorry.
Our resident Kite expert.
The OEC designates a community organization as the administrator, and in our case, it's Kite. It's, it's pretty much always been.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Kalman, maybe you can answer it. I mean, in addition to saying that it's, you know, that Kite serves as the School Readiness Council, it also says that they're entirely responsible for making sure the goals of the grant are being carried out, but I didn't see in our packet what the goals were. Was it, is there a listing? Where would we find the goals of the grant?
There is. I don't have it, I haven't looked at it recently, but there, there is.
Okay.
I would just add into that, that the majority of the School Readiness Grant that we get is really about cost preschool slots for, for students who can't afford preschool. So we get those 28 slots and it's really about ensuring that we fill those with high-quality preschool programming. And this is where I would argue I wish we had more of this funding because there's such a need for early childhood services.
So if I reached out to Brianna, like would that be?
Oh, Brianna Beckstrad?
Yeah. Would that, if that would be fine to do? Okay. That'd be great.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, Kathy. Kathy. Yes. Mr. Rider.
Yes.
Mrs. Akri.
Yes.
Dr. Kalman.
Yes.
Ms. Cushman.
Yes.
Mr. Genitis.
Yes.
Mr. Kober.
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Ms. Pickett.
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. So do you want to vote for?
This is the trailer trash law. So those of you who are on the board will recall, last year, the summer concert series is on Tuesday evenings, so this is an adjustment to your board meetings beginning on June 4th. But you have to take board action to alter the time so you don't conflict with the concerts. I kind of liked it, but that's up to you.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion to approve moving the start times by June 11th, June 25th, and August 27th, Board of Ed regular meeting. Motion. Second. Motion made by Ms. LeBlanc, second by Ms. Pickett. Any discussion?
I just wanted to reiterate, for any...
I just wanted to reiterate, for any board members that weren't sitting here last summer, that we couldn't even hear the people sitting to our immediate right and left. So in case you have a moral protest against it, we won't be able to hear each other. It's just something for these few dates, and I encourage it.
They heard it on the, oh, they seven, but they heard it on the TV, too, like through the TV.
Yeah, and I did ask that, we asked that building grounds reserves parking spots, at least like 11 or 12, so everybody at least can come. So you don't have to walk.
Yeah, Dr. Jerry and Ms. Cushman traversed through.
You have to park at like, something.
Anyone else? Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Cover?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes? And I'd also like to note that since we did this 30 days prior to June 11th, those can still be considered regular meetings, so it doesn't have to be discussion. All right, so, I'm so excited about. Receipt of an act? Oh, receipt of an action upon recommendation of superintendent of schools concerning teacher contract non-renewals in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 10-151. Mr. Dreszek.
To be clear, it's not really my recommendation, it's more of a requirement. This stinks.
Yep.
We haven't done this for a while, and I don't take any pleasure in having this conversation with you this evening, but as I mentioned in March 26th, unfortunately, it's a necessary evil of the cycle that we currently live in when it comes to the way funding is provided to local boards of education. Essentially, all teachers, tenured or non, have the, we have an obligation to tell them whether or not they have a contract for next year. The difference is, if you're non-tenured, there is still an expectation that if not told in writing by May 1st, that their, that the district cannot secure them a position definitively. They have, we have an obligation as a board to notify non-tenured staff members by May 1st. Again, it's 10-151, it's a statute regarding teacher tenure. It's written in the law. You have to abide by it. You don't, but in where you currently sit right now, with regards to next year's fiscal situation, you don't know what your budget's going to be. So you have an obligation to tell people whether or not you can promise them a position next year. And legally, the only ones you can do this to are those who are most inexperienced, and they are non-tenured staff members. What the board has traditionally done is, when we've, we used to do this in the past, is that the board would authorize a superintendent to non-renew all non-tenured staff members. So you wouldn't just pick certain areas or certain people or favorites or anything along those lines. It's awful. I've done it 20 years now. Well, not the last six. This year is going to sting a little bit more so, for all of the obvious reasons, but also because the number. You have currently 121 non-tenured teachers. The headline tomorrow morning cannot be, "The Enfield Board Lays Off 121 Teachers." That's not what you're doing. Essentially, what you're doing tonight by your action is telling those 121 non-certified staff members that at the present time, you cannot promise their position. You cannot promise their contract because, and this is very important, there's two ways to non-renew non-tenured staff. There's cause and there's budgetary reasons. These 121 are for budgetary purposes, and it'll be stated in the letter. So it's not as if someone will say, well, did I do, was I not good at my job? Am I not a good teacher? It's nothing, this is 100% about money. And until the board has an adopted budget, you can't guarantee, and unfortunately, the law says you have to do this by March, by May 1st, and this is the last time you meet before May 1st, and we have to physically hand these letters to our staff members prior to that. Look, this is my last time doing this here, so I'm just gonna, I don't know, I'm just gonna say it. This is emotional for everyone. This is one of the worst things, not the worst thing, but it's close to one of the worst things that we all have to do in this role. And throughout my 20-year tenure here, this has also been contentious. And I know there's a lot of young, great teachers out there right now that are scared and thinking, what does this mean for them next year? I get it. I'm, I understand. I really wish we didn't have to do this. But unlike maybe in years past, this isn't something that you did as a board. This isn't something that the council, who occupies these chambers on Monday nights, did either. And I think people need to understand that. In years past, we've done the non-renewals, and then people would flood the council meetings on Mondays and say, "The council needs to fix this, council needs to fix this." I can't in good conscience say that the Enfield Town Council created this mess. I think Chairwoman Riley, you alluded to it earlier. We're in this fiscal uncertainty because of the lack of funding from the state of Connecticut. I don't know how many times I have to say it, and I'm just gonna keep saying it till I walk out the door. You know, everyone has their opinion on the alliance status. And I've gotten the daylights beat out of me over the last two years because of it. But the saving grace in all of that was we were going to get paid. It was worth it to me to take whatever public backlash about the Scarlet Letter of being an alliance district was worth it, because they were going to send us $1.5 million a year. We never got it. Three years in a row. And it's not for lack of trying. Tina, you're the former chair. How many meetings did we go to? How many conversations did we have? How many letters did we write? How many times did we testify to try to show the inequities of what's happening here in Enfield? And it fell upon deaf ears. Fortunately, Charlotte, since November, you've done the same thing. You took a day off from work to come with me to Hartford, to tell the people who did this to fix it. Check didn't come. We talked about special education costs. The difference between ECS funding and excess cost funding. Excess cost funding, you articulately explained, I won't do it again. But what the community needs to know, what Enfield needs to know, is when we, our budget was adopted last year in May, we were told with all the historic funding in public education that at least we were going to get an increase in our excess cost funding, from 74% to 91%. What that means is $600,000. They don't calculate that number until February, because it's one pool of money in $1 amount. Well, guess what? The jury's in. We're getting less than we got the previous year. We're getting $71 million. $600,000. And they actually sent, and I shared this with Chairwoman Riley, you know, everyone's, there's a, letters being circulated. Everybody's trying to advocate, but the state showed us, this is, and this kind of teased us, like, this is what you thought you were getting, but this is what you're actually going to get. That's after our budget's passed. That's $600,000 that we thought we had in the bank that we don't have, in addition to all of our costs going up. I also think it's very important, we had a very productive meeting with the town council last weekend, but I think it's relevant. You know, we can talk about education funding, and we can get into the weeds, and we can talk about transparency, but you're yelling at the wrong people. It's not that hard to figure out what's in our book, what's in the town's book. But what you need to figure out is, all of us have lived through or heard or had discussions about a 0% increase, understandably, because the taxpayers don't want their tax bill to go up. But the people in this community need to understand that what the state of Connecticut did for you for ECS for two straight years, and a third that we're going into, is they told you, you all ever seen Caddyshack? You're spalding. You'll get nothing in like it. You have been flat-funded by the state of Connecticut for three straight years, during a time where there has historic increases in public education funding. We got nothing. Charlotte, you were on the council the year that the state tried to cut $5 million bucks. And I'll give the former mayor credit, Mayor Mike called me and said, "We're getting cut $5 million, we're not going to touch you." You didn't do this. How many times are they going to pull the rug out from underneath this community? That's why we're in this position. We haven't had to non-renew because we did everything the way we were supposed to be. The 20 of you, and me and my counterparts, the administration on the town side, we planned. We saw what was coming. Amanda, I appreciate you mentioning it. I've been saying this for four years, the well's going to run dry. We were robbing Peter to pay Paul to survive. But we did that in conjunction with our, with the town. There was never, and when people don't always see eye to eye on things, they start pointing fingers at each other. This is not one of those opportunities. We're not in this position because the town council's going to gut us. The town council hasn't discussed our budget. You don't have to do this tonight. It's not, don't go run into the mayor's office and say, "You did this." He didn't do this. Now, there's been years where the council has said, "We're going to cut it, cut as many teachers as you want." I'm not, you know, some of us have the scars of that. That's not what happened here, folks. And I just think it's important for the community to understand this. We, it is compounded. We've been shorted almost $4.5 million. And they're talking about other grants and opportunities. You're 100% right. As an alliance district, there's opportunities for other grants, capital grants. We applied. We didn't get it. There was opportunities, everybody saw the press release. One thing that we bought, the one staff member that we used those grants for was social workers. And then the state came out with a competitive grant for social workers, because they recognized, well, we recognized when COVID first hit, our kids are going to come back a mess. They're going to need help. So we got the authority, not only through the board, but we also partnered with the town and said, "This is what we're going to spend our money. Are you guys okay with that?" And then the commissioner signed off on it. And then when the state put out a competitive grant for districts in this current year to hire social workers, we applied. And you know what the answer was? Your infrastructure's better than some of your neighbors. The same neighbors who got raises. So when we talk about education funding and all this other stuff, the community needs to realize that I don't know anyone in their private life who can expect that things haven't gone up. We have that argument all the time. Inflation, things go up, a gallon of milk's more expensive. Just because we're a public entity in a public school system, doesn't mean we're immune to that. And we're not saying that, and the council's not saying that. Harvard, and again, and I gotta be fair, this wasn't the commission of education, this wasn't the, it's the people who voted to pass that budget. They sent you nothing. And now we're in a position where, for the first time in seven years, on my way out the door, I have to tell you guys, we have to non-renew non-tenured staff members because we don't know what we're getting. And unfortunately, at the present time, the only one who can help us on this is the town council. And it's unfair to go to the town council. We've had this discussion since we did the budget in January, February. It's a big ask. But that's why we're in the position that we're in. So unfortunately, Chairwoman Riley, you have a legal obligation as a board to authorize me to send out 121 letters by the end of the week. And I don't want to do it, but I don't have a choice.
Thank you, Mr. Dreszek. All right, so, yeah. I need a motion to approve authorizing the superintendent to notify the appropriate certified teachers of their contract non-renewals in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 10-151. So I need a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Cushman. I need a second. Second by Mr. Genitis. Discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Genitis.
The explanation you just gave is right on. It is. But how many people, particularly teachers, are actually watching, you know, this program? And I would urge you, both of you, Andy and Chris, to encourage the principals at the schools, at their next teachers' meetings, to basically give that explanation you just gave. Because a lot of them just, they're scared, they're panicking, and they don't know what's going on. But the explanation you just gave, it makes sense. And we, as a board and the town council, we're caught between a rock and a hard place. It's no different than with the federal government and the state government. The large cities, where they have more representation, are determining what the rest of, in this, our case, the state is doing.
Can I just add something that I forgot? I apologize for interrupting you, Peter. But you're right. Traditionally, I would hand these letters out myself. I think people, we owe these staff members the dignity to tell them, this is why you're getting the letter. I can't reach 121 people, even split between Andy and I. So this is the first time that he and I aren't going to be able to personally deliver them, but we're going to ask our administrative team to help us. They just found out that about that today, that we're going to talk about it this week. We talk a lot, about a lot of things in this room. And Peter, you just jogged my memory. Yes, I think a lot of people must watch this. Because I get a lot of comments, and I'm like, "You weren't there, how did you know?" So I think people are watching, and the people are talking, and I'm sure there's text strands flowing around right now about what the heck's going on. We often talk about equity in this room. And I'm going to pose a question to the nine of you and to the community. Before I get to that, we've also heard a lot, again, about being named an alliance district. But people need to understand, that grant is very specific as to what we can spend it on. You did it anyway. We have instructional coaches in our elementary schools. That qualified as a reimbursable expense under the alliance grant. You didn't get the money, you still did it. Why? Because it was right for kids. Some of our social working programs, a lot of our equity work, all the things that the board does and is proud of, all of that would have been, should have been, was promised to have been paid for. But you, as a community, did it anyway. So when people say, "What are you going to do to get off the alliance district?" You're going to do all of the things that are required to help kids, and unfortunately, you're going to pay for it, because there are 36 alliance districts in the state of Connecticut. 35 of them get a grant, get money. I'll give you all one guess, who the one district that doesn't get a dime is. I think I may have shared this, and I want to make him giggle. You got who got's.
It's still old Saybrook.
It's old Saybrook. There are 36 alliance districts in the state of Connecticut. 35 of them get money. You don't. We don't. This number wouldn't be as high if we had $2.8 million more in our pocket from the last two years. Didn't come. I don't know. We've tried. We've been through, believe me, we have been through the wringer on this publicly and privately. I can't tell you exactly what happened at the midnight hour. I can't even blame the governor, because the governor had it in his budget. That's, the first infamous phone call I got was, "It's in the governor's budget, I need to have a meeting with you." It didn't make it. We don't know why. We weren't in the room. But now it's time that the 20 of you get together and start making sure the people down the highway realize what they're doing and the burden they're putting on your community. So yes, Peter, I agree with you. I wish I could tell every single person that gets one of these letters exactly what I said here tonight. I'm going to hope that the message gets translated by the time it gets to these folks, because unfortunately, with the timing, we just physically can't get there to talk to every single person.
Okay, continuing.
Peter, you may continue.
When it comes to like the alliance district, I mean, the previous board, whether you liked it or not, what I said and what I was alluding to, the alliance district, now, I can honestly say, if I knew what I knew now, I wouldn't have said what I said then. Because this whole thing with special ed and everything, and the cost is, I see, I mean, it's hitting us right between the eyes.
I'm going to interrupt you again, Peter, because I don't really care at this point. What, are you going to fire me? And I want to give credit to Chairwoman Riley on this, because when she first came in, she said, "I want a better explanation," for herself. We spent a long time in my office going through. You have been getting presentations every week on a different indicator. This is something else that's important for the public to know. We talk about what could the money have been used for. Any one of those indicators, and you've seen a large section of them so far, you haven't seen them all. Any one of those indicators are allowable expenses. So think about that. Anything we've talked about in those 12 indicators, any of those presentations that we've had, college career readiness, it's not just reading, writing, math. It's everything. As long as there's a correlation between the funding and improvement on an indicator, it's an allowable expense. And we're already doing it. But you're paying the entire bill. Peter, you may continue.
And summing up what I wanted to shortly say, the reason I really, I think you guys should address it to the principals, to give a full explanation. And when you say, you know, you get emails and stuff like that from people who are watching this, not everybody's watching, and I think we all know how devastating the rumor control works. It's, if you don't get the full story, and the rumors start spreading, and then panic sets in, disruption starts, and that's why I hope to give a good explanation to these kids.
That's it.
I trust they will.
Thank you, Mr. Genitis. Go ahead, Tina, Ms. Lang.
So I'll add my two cents here. When, uh, when we had the budget discussion with the town council, we learned that we had one common enemy in that room that evening, and it was the state of Connecticut. We can all agree on that. And it was brought up, like, let's contact your current legislators. Well, I did that as chair, especially when a budget wasn't going to get approved at 10 o'clock at night, and then I wake up the next morning and Channel 3 says, you know, monumental, historical funding for public education. And I'm just going to say, one legislator blamed it on the town manager, who has nothing to do with Enfield cost sharing, or excess cost sharing. Another one said, there wasn't really anything more they could do. And another one asked me for my name and phone number, and asked me to get more involved in politics. So, um, I think it's important, we have an election coming up, and I'm not saying for either side, like, I'm not, I don't want anybody to think I'm pushing one candidate more than the other, but it's really important to take a look at who is running and who can be a voice for Enfield in Hartford. Because that has been lacking. And it's frustrating, because as a chair, I learned more about state funding education than I ever thought I wanted to. I just have a hard time wrapping my head around the fact that we are constantly, we get communications that we're going to get one number, and then at the midnight hour, it's cut. And how do you have 36 alliance districts and one does not get funding? And I remember looking at the patch and seeing that, I think it was Ellington, Vernon, Suffield, maybe Summers, they all got the grant for social workers. Plus, they got money through their excess cost sharing grant increase. But it was because we already did it. I don't know how we keep ending up like that. Kudos to Councilor Ludwig from his Board of Ed days. He, he really understands how the finance, financing goes. Again, I want to address the fact that I don't want anybody who is considered high needs, special needs, to feel that they're unwelcome in the district. It's just that we don't have representation in Hartford that's properly addressing that. Because they're looking at our excess cost sharing, and they're like, last year, they're like, you're not getting, this happened last year, you're not going to get alliance money, but you're also getting too much excess cost sharing. But we won't reduce it, you're welcome. So their calculation has us, they think we're already getting too much. So it's a tangled web we weave. I think that it's frustrating too, because we actually could use more supports that could help us with not just special needs, but even for our regular ed students that are just on the cusp of struggling, or regular ed students who need to have more of a challenge. It's across the board. So that's where I think I can honestly say my frustration has lied. And it was a great conversation regarding the state in that room that evening, or regarding the budget discussion. So I just wanted to add my two cents on that, my frustration.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Pickett.
All right. Well, I agree that we haven't gotten the funding that we deserve and need from the state. I do disagree and say that it's not just the state's fault. It's our fault too. As a town, we've never adequately funded our education budget, and we don't put our money where it needs to be, in education staff and services. I'm going to continuously harp on this and not on armed guards. So I struggle a lot with this decision, because I think if we had a comprehensive proactive conversation, we could better budget for security, and we could actually be saving our staff. I can't even imagine losing one staff member, especially hearing the number. We have so many new, energized, amazing staff. Some of them spoke, I think, at our last meeting, who have come from other districts, so they're not maybe tenured here. I don't know exactly how that works. But I just can't imagine losing staff, and I don't, I can't even imagine what it feels like to receive one of these notices. So I'm sick that we're in this decision, and I wish we had better proactive conversations so we could plan better.
Go ahead, Mr. Coburn.
So I have just two questions, just for, for, I guess, clarity on this, this whole thing, and to kind of quantify it. So through the chair to the super, the money in question with the alliance grant, that's 1.4 million per year?
That's the calculation from the state. It's been over the last two.
Two, so 2.8 for both years. So, and just for, I guess, to quantify this notice, like we said, it's 121 non-tenured employees. If we opened the budget book and we changed all those dollar amounts to zero, what is the actual worst-case scenario? What is the dollar amount changing for these? Do you know?
For all 121?
Correct. Like, say they were all non-renewed.
I don't know, because I don't know how you're going to open school next year, my down, so I didn't go that far. But we just simply take the non-certified list, the non-tenured list, and universally give it to everyone. That's just been a practice of this board forever.
Okay. So I'll just add, I kind of quickly tried to go through our budget book with the, with the non, so it looks like it's between seven to eight million dollars for, for those 121 non-tenured. So I guess I just kind of want to paint the picture. Even if we had that alliance grant money, which would only be 1.4 a year, the number would still be high. It might not be 121, but I guess my, my point is, it just seems like there's a bigger picture of budget issues and the fiscal cliff and stuff we've been talking about. So I know the alliance district money is important, we've been harping on it, and maybe this ties into what Mrs. Pickett said about, you know, funding education better, but it looks like that's only a slice of the pie, and not the whole pie.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Black.
I just want to add that even though 121 staff members are going to get this letter, there are some staff members that we cannot, like, special ed, if there is a special teacher, like, you, you can't just like blanket 121 teachers and say, you're gone. You have to still meet the needs of the district. So trying to blanket that is probably not the most accurate approach to go towards that. I prepared, and I've had it for a while, and I'd be willing to share, because my, my frustration has been with the town. I did a 10-year comparison of what our budgets started in 2011 versus what our budgets are now. And what the increases the town took versus the increases the board received. And I've said this before publicly, that the average increase of the town was 3.13%, while the increase in the Board of Ed was 1.31%, which is less than the standard inflation. So there has been a long time of not getting appropriate funding through the town council. I'd be happy to share this worksheet with all of you, and you can research it. It came directly from the budget books. But the town started with a budget of 51 million, and at the time, we had a budget of 62 million. And this was the, the whole buildings and grounds, they had already taken buildings and grounds over. And then from 2011 to 2022, their budget grew from 51 million to 72 million. So their increase was $21 million, where our budget went from 62 million to 73 million, and our increase was a 10.5 million increase. And I know that we've gotten emails, where people are saying that our enrollment has declining, but what you have to think about is, one in every four students is special ed. And you might have less kids in your class, but you have kids with higher needs, you have kids, there's only so much a teacher can do to, for 18 kids in a class. Even if you go up to 20, there is only so much a teacher can do. And a teacher feels inadequate because they want to help all the kids in their class. And I think we, we have to look at the needs of our district as a whole, as a holistic approach. But we can't just look at things as a blanket and say, like, if we didn't replace 121 teachers, you know, how would that, what the budget implication is? It's, it's way more in-depth than that, especially when we have different factors we have to factor in.
Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead, Mr. Genitis.
Question, Chris. When it comes to special ed, are there some classes in, I think there are, but the, the number of kids that that teacher is working with is fixed?
Yeah, that's by law.
Yes, okay. So what this would present then, unfortunately, is some of those teachers, by law, would have to stay, thereby increasing, you know, it's not going to be strictly, strictly senior ed.
This is why the board is always just non-renewed all non-tenured staff members. In reality, you're not laying off 121 teachers. You can't open. And of those 121 teachers, there are some that are going to get this letter and be told, just throw it away, because you can't go anywhere, even if it's Armageddon, worst-case scenario. So, but legally, you have to tell, your only option at this point, to reduce staff without a hearing, is to non-renew your non-tenured staff. If, if, this gets even worse financially, and you have to go into tenured staff, that's a whole nother process that's dictated by Connecticut general statutes. So the only sort of clean way, which again, I'm simplifying something that's awful, is to go through the non-renewal process, so that way, the board's covered in the event you don't know what your funding is going to be. But of that 121, that's why you don't say, well, we're just going to do like this grade, because we know we can get rid of that. You don't. Because you, there's an also, there's another piece in this of certifications that teachers hold. So if one teacher's, you know, teaching a kindergarten classroom, but also is cross-dressed by special education, maybe they're not tenured, but we're going to move them into an open special education spot. So it, it's a huge puzzle, but the board has to take this action by May 1st. That's why you do everybody.
Let me interrupt you for a minute.
Go ahead. I could fire you.
In, in, in our history, now, I taught for 38 years, I've been out for, I don't know, about 12 or 15 now. In all that time, we've had crises similar to this. I can remember Andre, I can't even remember his last name, when he was a threat, Greco, yes. And the threat of, and that's just when we were, were you on the first board with me?
No.
But that was a threat, you know, 100 teachers are going to go. Have we ever really let go teachers under these circumstances? Because attrition always covered.
No, we laid off. I mean, I, I was part of the one where we laid off 60 staff members in 2010, 20, 2009, 2010, when I came back.
We left, we let go 60?
I let go 60, we let go 60 people.
Teachers or just?
Everybody, yeah. I think 45 of them were teachers.
I didn't know that.
He was rifted that year. He ended up from, that's how he ended up in Enfield High.
Get back.
So, yeah, no, we, we have, it wasn't a threat. Now, the difference was, during that time, we didn't have as many non-tenured staff members as we currently do now. So the universal blanket of this, and I remember Joyce used to always be the one to read it, but we may have only had 30 non-tenured teachers, so that would do the trick, so they would just non-tenure everyone. To stay consistent in doing everyone, it's such a large number, that you can't survive with that amount of people being gone. But you're being consistent inequitable about it, as much as it sucks for all 121 people.
Yes, go ahead.
So the 1.4 million, I'm sorry to, to go on, I just want a better understanding of it. So if we did get the 1.4 alliance money, that isn't for staffing, correct? Isn't it, what, what is, don't we have to be specific? It can be for staffing? Okay.
And it really, because, and I think it's important for you guys to know, because we're, you're currently doing some of the things that could have been, you really could count it twice.
Shift the money, basically.
Yeah. So you had things in your budget already. For instance, we have coaches this year.
Yes.
We put the coaches in, knowing that that could have been shifted to the alliance plan and the alliance funding, which would have freed up an additional money for the coaches that you already had in your checking account.
Correct.
When the money didn't come in, you had to spend the money on, I'm not picking on the coach, that's one that was pretty public when we actually approved it. So there are other things. So anything within any of those indicators, staff included, it can't be all staff, but there can be staff in there. But those are things, the, the reason we were in a more advantageous position when it happened was, a lot of the things we were already doing would have qualified, because we recognized, I mean, the other thing about being an alliance district, we always were.
Yeah.
When this was created, we were 35. They took 30 in the first round, they upped it to 33 in the second round, and by the third round, they upped it to 36. That's when we got on. This wasn't a surprise to anyone when it happened. But I understand there's some members of the public who don't necessarily understand and/or agree, and that's for them. But we recognize what the needs of our kids are, and we've been very proactive in this community, as well as being partnering, even though these bodies don't always get along, you always got along when it was important stuff to do, right? Building a new high school, building a new middle school, helping us build academic and therapeutic day school, those are the things that we did on our own. We've kind of gotten away from that a little bit, but the last few years have kind of gotten a bit, bit wonky. I don't, I think Tina, I think it was you said it. I mean, I think everybody woke up at our last meeting and realized, wait a minute, you didn't do this, you didn't do this. I mean, Peter and Tina got along. I'm trying to break the ice here, Peter. But nobody in here, or in this chamber, on Mondays, put you in this mess, currently. I can, I, you don't have to jump in, I know you're going to go with it, I'm not, I'm not taking, I'm not taking that bait. We agreed, disagreed. I'm saying the current situation was amplified because we weren't given, and I still have a hard time accepting that you got, that the town of Enfield was on the loser list for ECS. There's a real thing called the loser list. We're on it. Which meant you get, like I said, you know, I want a hamburger, hot dog, Spalding, you'll get nothing unlike it. That's what they told, I don't mean to make light of it, but if you don't, you're not going to be able to handle what's coming at the end of the week, so. Sorry.
No, no. So anybody else have anything? Okay. Well, I just want to say that this is one of the most garbage things that I've ever had to look at and/or do on the board. Just to even say that there's a possibility that even some would go, stinks beyond a shadow of doubt on that. I mean, we're doing all I can. I mean, we, I called the state, testified to the state, sent them emails, I mean, sure to knocking on the governor's door wherever he lives, that, that could be the next plan of attack. Yeah. But, I mean, we went to bat the other night at the council. We told them, this is what it is, you know? And some people seem to, you know, be on our side. But again, everything is still not done until the votes come in. So this is just, this is not fun. I'm, I'm at least glad that you don't have to make me read the names, because that, that would not be cool. But I'm just saying that we're still trying and fighting as best as we can, so.
As Yogi says, it's not over till it's over.
Correct. Yep. So the goal is to keep everyone, for sure.
Yes. I would just encourage people, I know Mr. Drazek mentioned it in his superintendent's report, there is a public hearing where we are officially presenting our budget, April 29th. I would encourage families, staff, residents to plead for our budget.
Okay. So let's just get this, I guess, so, does any more discussion on the motion? Okay, roll call, please, Kathy. Mr. Ryder.
Yes, only because I'd want to know.
Mrs. Accree?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Abstain.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
No.
Mrs. Pickett?
Abstain.
Chairwoman Riley? Yes. Motion passes. I know we don't have a choice, I know. Okay. Moving on.
Chairwoman, may I make a motion?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to take items 11D, 11E, 11F, and 11G, and move them to after item 17.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Ryder, seconded by Mr. Coburn. I can have a, is there a discussion on that before?
The only discussion I'll add is, we're just moving them, so we can, the board can have executive session prior to public comments and voting.
Correct. And we'll come back after executive session, back out to the floor for those four items. Any other discussion? Okay. We can do a show of hands, so all those in favor, hands up. That is nine in favor, none against. Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Ryder. Okay, Board Committee reports, Curriculum Committee.
Our last meeting was held on April 18th. We discussed further plans with Michelle Middleton for teacher professional development in the future on the constitutional rights for staff and students. The next meeting will be May 16th.
Okay, Finance Budget Committee.
Finance and Budget met on April 1st. There will be expenditures for March being read in later in the meeting, and our next meeting is May 6th at 5:00 PM.
Okay, Policy.
Our April 17th policy meeting was rescheduled for April 30th.
Okay. And Leadership. Our last meeting was April 3rd. We talked about mostly everything that showed up on the agenda this evening. And we did meet last week with the Town Council to go over the budget. And we did talk about, the idea was brought up, and hopefully, that we will have the Finance Committee do quarterly budget updates so we can keep abreast of the situation as time goes by with, you know, if we have, you know, a major influx of kids in or out, or if, you know, unexpected expenditures came up, are we getting the grants that we're supposed to be, are we not, are we having problems? So, that will be a function of the Finance Committee quarterly. All right, the next meeting is not yet set, but I'm assuming it'll probably be in the next week or so. Okay, number 13, Liaison Reports, Joint Facilities.
I went to that meeting, I'm not sure half of what they were talking about, that wasn't relevant to the schools, but the roof thing is just all over the place, and I know it's probably much of a surprise to everybody, but the state once again, the paperwork and stuff like that, but they will eventually be getting done. I think the first one's going to be the library, is, I think that's the first one they're going to do. Well, it's three different roofs, I didn't, did you realize that? Yeah.
Referendum has 16 or more roofs on it.
Oh, okay. So, that's it.
Okay, JFK Building Committee.
I believe we're still going to have Mr. Daigle come next month.
Yep, next month.
So, he'll give us a full update on the JFK project.
Yes, okay, Joint Security. Our last meeting was April 5th. The next meeting is May 10th. Amanda, I will ask again about the signage, but last time I heard it was with the DOT at the state, so as the chief said, it's in the graveyard for a little bit with the state. The MOU, I believe is still with the lawyers. And then, if you didn't see the last meeting of the council, they have added a second captain, and a function of that captain's job will be to oversee the SROs. And so, they have, they'll be doing their own personal candidate search and however they do that.
Madam Chair, can I just add, just for awareness, so we, the position of school safety officers is currently posted through the Town of Enfield website, and they are accepting applications. So, to those that are qualified, we encourage them to apply.
Yes, thank you, Phil. Enfield Mental Health Committee.
Dr. Kalman and I met with Mr. Longi, Julie Carroll, and David White last Thursday. They presented a training program called Uplift, which will be implemented in the future for our teachers, administrators, school staff, and coaches. This training is a trauma-informed care training. This trauma-informed approach will integrate the understanding of trauma and its impact on our students and the adults that work with them. This trauma training will also help staff recognize signs of trauma while working with the students on a daily basis. The next meeting has not been set yet.
Thank you, Jean. Enfield Cultural Arts, anything on that, Tina?
No, their last meeting was, oh my goodness, let me check my calendar. The last meeting was, I missed the last meeting because I had a prior commitment. They issued a link for their summer concert series, so check that out. Can you post the link on the Enfield PTO?
Sure.
All right, so Scott will post the link there, but no other updates as far as that goes.
Okay, all right, so School Reports, Updates. Mr. Ryder.
All right, so for Eli Whitney, Eli Whitney is hosting a blood drive tomorrow in honor of Bradley and Grace Law. It'll be at the Eli Whitney School because we're having an early release day. It'll take place between 1:00 and 6:00 PM. To register, to donate, please visit redcrossblood.org and use the sponsor code BGLAW for BJ Law. I'll also post this later tonight on Enfield PTO and our social media platforms. Also, our Grade 5 students will receive their Arbor Day trees this Friday, April 26th. We should check on the tree.
I know, I was just.
For Walter. We should check on Walter's tree, too.
Their tree, yes.
I'll make a note. Also, Field Day is scheduled now, it's going to be Wednesday, May 29th, although that's a couple of weeks off, I wanted to mention it tonight because I wanted to say that in the principal's newsletter, there's info for parent volunteers, so you can make sure you can sign up for that. The rain date is that same week on Friday, May 31st. And then, just a couple of end-of-year dates, because we are only 36 or 7 days away from the end of school. June 3rd is the end-of-year assembly at 9:00. That same day on June 3rd is the Grade 5 celebration at noon. June 4th, the next day, the HMS 2nd grade students will be visiting Eli Whitney. And then, on June 7th is the Grade 5 field trip, the traditional field trip to Sturbridge Village. That's all I have.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Coburn.
So, I'll go ahead for Henry Barnard, Family and Friends, and just a general update, so 2024 kindergarten registration opened April 1st, so now's the time to apply. As many parents are aware, there was the AIDS cutoff, moving the birth dates from January to September, so there is also corresponding waivers. If you have students that are affected, you need to apply for the waiver, your student will undergo an assessment, and then they will be informed whether or not they will be eligible for kindergarten this year or not. And just a general reminder, the Big Cat Newsletter does go out every Friday, so we do encourage everyone to read that. Important dates coming up is 1st Grade Family Night at CT Science Center, will be this Thursday, the 25th. There is a PTO fundraiser Wednesday, May 1st. Barnard Family Music Night with Ms. Renee is going to take place Tuesday, May 21st. And 2nd Grade Family Night at the CT Science Center will be conducted Monday, May 13th. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Go ahead, Ms. Pickett.
Just quick, Enfield Street School, I want to thank our PTO for a Science Center Assembly that they sponsored, and they are hosting an Ice Cream Social Book Fair this Wednesday evening from 5:00 to 7:00. Parkman, again, another thank you to our PTO there for BMX Assembly that they gave for the students, my son was super excited about that. There is a Math Extravaganza Night Thursday in partnership with our ERFC, and I'm going to echo Mr. Coburn's comments, the administrators send out regular newsletters, and I encourage families to read those for more in-depth details, and they are also posted on enfieldpto.com.
Go ahead, Ms. Akri.
For Crandall, I attended the Crandall or the Book Reveal Celebration at the Enfield Public Library on April 17th, and the grades 3, 4, 5 students in town will be reading a graphic novel series by Jarrett Crozaska titled Lunch Lady. Crandall Field Day T-shirts will be on sale until the end of the week, April 26th. We will not be able to reopen the store if you miss the deadline, so please see the Crandall Newsletter for the link. Teacher Experience Raffle winners are starting to redeem their awards. Teachers and staff volunteered their time to provide a fun experience for the students. For example, there was a French Fry Taste Test with Mrs. Nuzzo, or Dollar Bill Origami with Mrs. Molden. In partnership with Enfield Social Services, the 5th grade students will take part in a dangers of vaping presentation on Monday, April 29th. That's all.
Okay. Go ahead, Dr. Kalman.
For the Kite Report, just a few announcements from the member organizations. The PLA Class 6 is running the Enfield Townwide Tag Sale on May 18th from 9:00 until 3:00 PM. The money raised from this tag sale will go to the Enfield Food Shelf. PFLAG Scholarship Application Process is now open. There are two scholarships for $1,000 apiece. They are open to all LGBTQ and any allies who may be interested in applying for them. Child First is an organization providing an evidence-based form of psychotherapy for young children and their families. Currently, there is a very short waiting list, so if you know any families that might benefit from their services, please contact Elena Josephson at ajosephson@thevillage.org. The Food Shelf is participating in the Walk for Hunger on May 4th at 10:00 AM at Duncan Park. During the month of April, Smoothville Smoothies will donate 20% of all sales of the screwed smoothies to Enfield Food Shelf. The Community Access and Equity Fair is being held on May 1st from 9:30 to 3:00 PM at the State Armory in Hartford, and there will be free transportation for families. And Loaves and Fishes has the following upcoming events, April 20th Bingo Night at 6:00 PM, doors open at 5:00. Walk Against Hunger at Duncan Park again on May 4th at 10:00 AM, and Trivia Night on May 11th, 7:00 PM. And finally, with respect to Head Start, Head Start will soon be launching its annual self-assessment, beginning with a focus group discussion on May 1st, and we will keep you apprised of developments. And the Head Start Health Advisory Committee will be meeting on May 15th for its spring update. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kalman. Anybody else? Okay, so Hazardville Memorial, the PTO has ticket sales for Ringling Brothers Saturday, May 4th at 7:00 PM, and they also have tickets for Yard Goat Sunday, May 19th. Order your tickets by May 5th, they're $19 each. And let's not, anybody forget that May 6th through May 10th is Teacher Appreciation Week, so stay tuned, because they always send home fun packets for kids to do and give to their teachers that week. And then Buzz Robotics, they, this is an amazing group of kids and mentors. I actually got to go to the Biggie and watch them compete in the New England District Championship. Ms. Mar was there, and she explained to me how the games work, and one of the kids, Abby, she showed me around the pits. It was, if you have never been to one and you have an opportunity to go, you should totally go. It was, it was so, it was a buzz. It was so cool. And so, they made sixth place, but the really cool thing about them making sixth place is their robot broke, so they could not do the goal of getting the rings up into the basket. So, what they did, there's like spots on the playing field that are marked out in different areas, and so basically, they're on a team of like two others, two other groups. And so, they ended up playing defense for the other teams so that the other teams couldn't get close enough to put the circles in the buckets. And so, not only did they take sixth place by doing that with a broken robot, they won the Team Spirit Award for outstanding imagery and enthusiasm, and I'm not going to lie, you totally know when Buzz is there because that's like the only group that was like up and cheering, they had signs, they have like coordinated chants, these kids and Ms. Mar, and they all were awesome. And so, this week, they were in Houston for the world championship. I'm not 100% sure how they did, I mean, I've looked on their Facebook page, but I don't really understand where they ended up, so I hope they did good. But another awesome thing is Sophie Carrier. She was one of only five students in New England to be chosen as a Dean's List finalist in recognition for her outstanding contributions and leadership on the team. And this is the first time that Buzz has had a student receive that recognition, so kudos to her. So, we've had a lot of really good firsts this week in Enfield. So, yeah, that's all my liaison report, but definitely if you have a chance to ever go and see Buzz Robotics in action, definitely go. It was totally worth it. All right. I'm going to move on to number 14, Approval of Minutes. Regular Board of Ed Meeting Minutes, March 26, 2024. Need a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Coburn.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pickett. Any discussion? Sensing none. Can I have a show of hands in favor? Okay, nine in favor, any against? Any abstentions? One abstention, I mean, eight in favor, one abstention. Are you doing math? Okay. Number 15, Approval of Counts and Payroll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have two reports to read in for the month of March. The first will be Certification of Grants and Head Start Expenditures. Let it be known, the Finance Committee met on April 1st, 2024 to review financial statements for grants during the month of March, year-to-date, and examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded, there is nothing of significance to report to the board. I therefore move we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. Quote, "I hereby certify that in the month of March, the total grant and Head Start expenditures amount to $709,561.74, broken down between payroll totaling $489,746.11, and other accounts totaling $219,815.63." All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approvals for check invoices are properly documented," end quote, prepared by Lorraine Suzarnos, Business Manager.
All right, motion made by Mr. Coburn.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Pickett. Any discussion? Okay, a show of hands in favor? Nine in favor, none against?
All right, yep, the second one to read in is our Certification of Expenditures. Again, be it known that the Finance Committee met on April 1st, 2024 to review financial statements for the month of March, year-to-date, and examine various documents related to finances. Our review again concluded, there was nothing of significance, so report back to the full board. Motion, "I therefore move we accept the superintendent's certification as follows." Quote, "I hereby certify that in the month of March, total expenditures amount to $9,617,442.39, broken down between payroll totaling $7,682,614.60, and other accounts totaling $1,934,827.79." All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approvals for check invoices are properly documented," end quote, prepared by Lorraine Suzarnos, Business Manager.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Coburn, second by Ms. Pickett. Any discussion? No, okay. Show of hands in favor. Nine in favor, none against. Okay. All right, so, Mr. Ryder, do we have any correspondence or board communication?
We do. I'm going to pass this down.
Oh, okay.
Take one down and pass it around. We have been cordially invited to the Enfield Adult Ed Graduation Ceremony. This year, it'll take place on Thursday, June 6th at 6:00 PM. It'll be at the Enfield Municipal Annex, 124 North Maple Street, Enfield, Connecticut, with a reception to follow, so I want to make sure everybody got their invitations. Phil, did you get yours?
Yes.
There's two? Oh, just the one, okay.
I was going to say, and the award goes to?
Nope, just the one this week, so, thank you.
Okay. All right, so.
Madam Chair, do we just want to add, because this was our first meeting in a month, and I know it's evident by our agenda, but we did receive a letter from Mr. Longi declining the appointment to superintendent. It came via email, I just, for the public, just to reiterate that the board received that correspondence.
We did, all of us received that. Yep, perfect. Okay, so, we need to go into executive session regarding collective bargaining and personnel. So, we're going to go into executive session, and then we will come back out to address items, new business items, D, E, F.
Yeah, sorry, 11D through 11G.
Yep, all right, so.
Do you want to make a motion to extend past 10 now before, before you go into executive session?
So, I need a motion to extend the meeting time past 10.
So moved.
Motion, motion made by Ms. Pickett, any second? Second by Dr. Kalman, any discussion? Any discussion?
That's a quiet case.
That's a roll call vote. Please.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
This is agreed?
Yes.
Dr. Callen?
Yes.
This is Bushman?
Yes.
Mr. Trenner?
No.
Mr. Coburn?
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
General Counsel Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right. So now I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Coburn, second by Ms. Pickett. Show of, any discussion? Show of hands in favor? There is nine in favor, none against. All right. So we're going to go into executive session now, and we will be back after we're done.
Okay.
You may have to gavel.
All right, cool. All right, so we are back.
Gavel yourselves back in.
We are back. Okay, so we are going to go to 11D. Discussion and action regarding establishing a superintendent search committee. Okay, so we had a good executive session. And so here's where we're at. The superintendent search committee is charged with reviewing all applications for the superintendent position, selecting candidates for an initial screening interview, conducting the interviews, and selecting two to four finalists to forward to the Enfield Board of Education. The committee will consist of current board leadership, which is myself, Peter Genitis, Scott Ryder, and Tina Lumike. The committee should identify the criteria candidates must meet and the qualities it wants in a new superintendent. Board members, staff, parents, and the community will also have input in this criteria. The committee will review the superintendent's job description to make certain that the document reflects the responsibilities of the role, and also review any district policies concerning employment and personnel. The committee will come to the board with a recommended job description, leadership profile. The committee will bring recommendations to the board on the salary range. The search committee will publish the vacancy. The search committee may be involved in checking references of semifinalists and finalists and background checks. Search committee will develop interview questions and plan the semifinalist interview process, where the interviews take place, how many questions will be asked, et cetera. Search committee should commit to clear ground rules for confidentiality. The committee and the board should have a discussion on the issue of confidentiality. Many candidates are sitting superintendents, and if their candidacies become known in their districts too early in the process, their credibility in their current position may be undermined. Remember that during the interview of superintendent candidates, each candidate will also be determining if he or she will have an effective working relationship with the board if the candidate is hired. The Enfield Board of Education as a whole will interview finalists and decide who will be the next superintendent from the selected pool. So I need a motion to approve, leadership being the superintendent search committee.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Pickett. Seconded by Dr. Callanan. Discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Coburn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just a couple of brief comments. I know it's late, and I know this is a topic that has come up again very recently, talking in February. So I know I'm definitely in favor of having a search committee, and obviously, we're not hiring a firm. This is a committee that's being in-house, that's doing the work, basically along the line of what you just read. My hesitation at this point, however, is just duplicating our leadership to be the superintendent search committee. I personally would have preferred fresh insight, various other personnel having the opportunity to serve on that committee, and I would also prefer a narrower committee, either two or three members, preferably three, just in the structure of organization and voting and reviewing applications. I think a odd number would be a little more constructive and tie-breaking and things to that effect, and determining which applications may or may not become visible to the full board down the road. So I think the charge of the committee is on track, and we have the right goals in mind. And I think it's important to get feedback from all stakeholders, including staff and the community. You know, this is something, you know, we can't go back and change time. Had we started in February, it may have helped us out a little bit, but nonetheless, here we are. But again, for the makeup of the committee and the size of the committee, I will not be in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Go ahead.
I concur with an awful lot of what Phil just said, except the choices of the committees. I'd rather see three, and if not three, then the four.
Anyone else? Mrs. Pickett?
Thank you, Chairwoman Riley, for all of you, all that you've done, sorry, to get us ready for this discussion. I would say that it was a robust discussion and executive session. I'm just going to make a couple other comments. I think it's really important that any candidate, potential candidate who's interested in coming to Enfield really does see that we are working in a unified front, and so I think equal representation is really important. I also think having leadership involved makes sense. I know our caucus, we feel supported and communicate well with our leadership, and I would assume the same for your caucus, so that way there's, both of your, both parties feel supported. The other piece, and I know maybe we'll hear more about it, but I would also echo Phil's comments that staff, family, and student voice in shaping kind of the qualities and helping us select, identify those qualities so we can select a candidate that matches those qualities is really important. So I know we are going to be outlining some quick next steps on that.
Thank you, Ms. Pickett. Anybody else? No? Okay. So then, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
What exactly are we voting on?
We're voting that the superintendent search committee is the leadership committee.
Dr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
No.
Mr. Coburn?
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right, so item E is discussion and action regarding appointing an interim superintendent. So even though we already appointed Mr. Longley as superintendent, we have to officially appoint him as interim superintendent to abide by state law and send that information to the commissioner within it. So I need a motion to appoint Andrew Longley as interim superintendent effective May 21st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. LeBlanc, seconded by Mr. Coburn. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, just to clarify, there are policies and statutes, so the interim will be set for 180 days, and of course, for obvious reasons, we do need an interim to guide us through the transition of a recurrent superintendent leaving at the end of May and pending the vacancy fill for the new superintendent. I know we were all excited when Mr. Longley had expressed interest in the original job, and we were excited to get him on board. Unfortunately, for, you know, various reasons, he decided to decline the full career superintendent role, but he has expressed his interest to serve as interim, and I'm excited to vote in favor of having him as our interim to guide us through this transition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. So roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Abstain.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Oh, you know what, Mr. Longley? I forgot to throw it back to you after the superintendent search committee to update us on what's going to happen, like, right away.
Absolutely. So the first step in the search is to develop a profile of the superintendent the community is looking for, and that will start tomorrow. So a survey has been established for feedback of all stakeholders, and what I mean by that is students, parents, teachers, and community members. So starting tomorrow on the Enfield Public Schools website will be a link right on the main page to the survey. And then at 4 o'clock tomorrow, there will be a full social media blast to all family members to complete the survey. We're going to give two weeks for the survey to be completed, so all members are able to have their voices heard. At that point, we'll compile the data. We'll be able to show that data and start to develop a profile to the leadership committee so we can develop questions and be able to start to make decisions of the type of superintendent the community is looking for.
Thank you, Mr. Longley. Appreciate that. Okay. Back to F. Discussion and action regarding CSEA/SEUI paraprofessional union contract agreement. Should we just do the motion to approve it, or do you want to? Nope. Okay. All right. So I need a motion to approve the CSEA/SEIU paraprofessional union contract agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Moved by, motion by Ms. Pickett, seconded by Dr. Callanan. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Madam Chair, just briefly, so the, an executive session, the board did have the opportunity to review the tentative agreement, and it's just narrow in showing the parts of the contract that are being updated. I think there's some very reasonable adjustments being made, and it's a very fair agreement. So I'll be in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Any other discussion? Okay. So can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yep.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. So discussion, item G. Discussion and action regarding Local 1303-46 Secretary Cafeteria Union Contract Agreement. So I need a motion to approve the Local 1303-46 Secretary Cafeteria Union Contract Agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Pickett, seconded by Dr. Callanan. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, it's similar along the comments I made on the last item. The board did get the opportunity to review the changes to the tentative agreement and executive session. All the changes and line items are identified, gave us the opportunity to review it, and everything seems as reasonable updates that are needed for this contract. So I'll be in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Pickett, seconded by Mr. Coburn. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, just briefly, so the, an executive session, the board did have the opportunity to review the changes to the tentative agreement and executive session. All the changes and line items are identified, gave us the opportunity to review it, and everything seems as reasonable updates that are needed for this contract. So I'll be in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Abstain.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. So I need a motion to approve the CSEA/SEIU paraprofessional union contract agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. LeBlanc, seconded by Mr. Coburn. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, just to clarify, there are policies and statutes, so the interim will be set for 180 days, and of course, for obvious reasons, we do need an interim to guide us through the transition of a recurring superintendent leaving at the end of May and pending the vacancy fill for the new superintendent. I know we were all excited when Mr. Longley had expressed interest in the original job, and we were excited to get him on board. Unfortunately, for, you know, various reasons, he decided to decline the full career superintendent role, but he has expressed his interest to serve as interim, and I'm excited to vote in favor of having him as our interim to guide us through this transition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. So roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Abstain.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right. So item E is discussion and action regarding appointing an interim superintendent. So even though we already appointed Mr. Longley as superintendent, we have to officially appoint him as interim superintendent to abide by state law and send that information to the commissioner within it. So I need a motion to appoint Andrew Longley as interim superintendent effective May 21st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. LeBlanc, seconded by Mr. Coburn. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, just to clarify, there are policies and statutes, so the interim will be set for 180 days, and of course, for obvious reasons, we do need an interim to guide us through the transition of a recurring superintendent leaving at the end of May and pending the vacancy fill for the new superintendent. I know we were all excited when Mr. Longley had expressed interest in the original job, and we were excited to get him on board. Unfortunately, for, you know, various reasons, he decided to decline the full career superintendent role, but he has expressed his interest to serve as interim, and I'm excited to vote in favor of having him as our interim to guide us through this transition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. So roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yep.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Pickett, seconded by Dr. Callanan. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, just briefly, so the, an executive session, the board did have the opportunity to review the tentative agreement, and it's just narrow in showing the parts of the contract that are being updated. I think there's some very reasonable adjustments being made, and it's a very fair agreement. So I'll be in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Any other discussion? Okay. So can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Pickett, seconded by Mr. Coburn. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, just to clarify, there are policies and statutes, so the interim will be set for 180 days, and of course, for obvious reasons, we do need an interim to guide us through the transition of a recurring superintendent leaving at the end of May and pending the vacancy fill for the new superintendent. I know we were all excited when Mr. Longley had expressed interest in the original job, and we were excited to get him on board. Unfortunately, for, you know, various reasons, he decided to decline the full career superintendent role, but he has expressed his interest to serve as interim, and I'm excited to vote in favor of having him as our interim to guide us through this transition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. So roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Abstain.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Pickett, seconded by Mr. Coburn. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, just to clarify, there are policies and statutes, so the interim will be set for 180 days, and of course, for obvious reasons, we do need an interim to guide us through the transition of a recurring superintendent leaving at the end of May and pending the vacancy fill for the new superintendent. I know we were all excited when Mr. Longley had expressed interest in the original job, and we were excited to get him on board. Unfortunately, for, you know, various reasons, he decided to decline the full career superintendent role, but he has expressed his interest to serve as interim, and I'm excited to vote in favor of having him as our interim to guide us through this transition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. So roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Abstain.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. Oh, you know what, Mr. Longley? I forgot to throw it back to you after the superintendent search committee to update us on what's going to happen, like, right away.
Absolutely. So the first step in the search is to develop a profile of the superintendent the community is looking for, and that will start tomorrow. So a survey has been established for feedback of all stakeholders, and what I mean by that is students, parents, teachers, and community members. So starting tomorrow on the Enfield Public Schools website will be a link right on the main page to the survey. And then at 4 o'clock tomorrow, there will be a full social media blast to all family members to complete the survey. We're going to give two weeks for the survey to be completed, so all members are able to have their voices heard. At that point, we'll compile the data. We'll be able to show that data and start to develop a profile to the leadership committee so we can develop questions and be able to start to make decisions of the type of superintendent the community is looking for.
Thank you, Mr. Longley. Appreciate that. Okay. Back to F. Discussion and action regarding CSEA/SEUI paraprofessional union contract agreement. So we just do the motion to approve it, or do you want to? Nope. Okay. All right. So I need a motion to approve the CSEA/SEIU paraprofessional union contract agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Moved by, motion by Ms. Pickett, seconded by Dr. Callanan. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, just briefly, so the, an executive session, the board did have the opportunity to review the tentative agreement, and it's just narrow in showing the parts of the contract that are being updated. I think there's some very reasonable adjustments being made, and it's a very fair agreement. So I'll be in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Any other discussion? Okay. So can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yep.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. So discussion, item G. Discussion and action regarding Local 1303-46 Secretary Cafeteria Union Contract Agreement. So I need a motion to approve the Local 1303-46 Secretary Cafeteria Union Contract Agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Dr. Callanan, seconded by Ms. Pickett. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, it's similar along the comments I made on the last item. The board did get the opportunity to review the changes to the tentative agreement and executive session. All the changes and line items are identified, gave us the opportunity to review it, and everything seems as reasonable updates that are needed for this contract. So I'll be in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Abstain.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. Oh, you know what, Mr. Longley? I forgot to throw it back to you after the superintendent search committee to update us on what's going to happen, like, right away.
Absolutely. So the first step in the search is to develop a profile of the superintendent the community is looking for, and that will start tomorrow. So a survey has been established for feedback of all stakeholders, and what I mean by that is students, parents, teachers, and community members. So starting tomorrow on the Enfield Public Schools website will be a link right on the main page to the survey. And then at 4 o'clock tomorrow, there will be a full social media blast to all family members to complete the survey. We're going to give two weeks for the survey to be completed, so all members are able to have their voices heard. At that point, we'll compile the data. We'll be able to show that data and start to develop a profile to the leadership committee so we can develop questions and be able to start to make decisions of the type of superintendent the community is looking for.
Thank you, Mr. Longley. Appreciate that. Okay. Back to F. Discussion and action regarding CSEA/SEUI paraprofessional union contract agreement. So we just do the motion to approve it, or do you want to? Nope. Okay. All right. So I need a motion to approve the CSEA/SEIU paraprofessional union contract agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Moved by, motion by Ms. Pickett, seconded by Dr. Callanan. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, just briefly, so the, an executive session, the board did have the opportunity to review the tentative agreement, and it's just narrow in showing the parts of the contract that are being updated. I think there's some very reasonable adjustments being made, and it's a very fair agreement. So I'll be in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Any other discussion? Okay. So can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yep.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. So discussion, item G. Discussion and action regarding Local 1303-46 Secretary Cafeteria Union Contract Agreement. So I need a motion to approve the Local 1303-46 Secretary Cafeteria Union Contract Agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Dr. Callanan, seconded by Ms. Pickett. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, it's similar along the comments I made on the last item. The board did get the opportunity to review the changes to the tentative agreement and executive session. All the changes and line items are identified, gave us the opportunity to review it, and everything seems as reasonable updates that are needed for this contract. So I'll be in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
No.
Mr. Coburn?
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right. So item E is discussion and action regarding appointing an interim superintendent. So even though we already appointed Mr. Longley as superintendent, we have to officially appoint him as interim superintendent to abide by state law and send that information to the commissioner within it. So I need a motion to appoint Andrew Longley as interim superintendent effective May 21st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. LeBlanc, seconded by Mr. Coburn. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Madam Chair, just briefly, so the, an executive session, the board did have the opportunity to review the tentative agreement, and it's just narrow in showing the parts of the contract that are being updated. I think there's some very reasonable adjustments being made, and it's a very fair agreement. So I'll be in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Any other discussion? Okay. So can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Abstain.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Pickett, seconded by Mr. Coburn. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, just briefly, so the, an executive session, the board did have the opportunity to review the tentative agreement, and it's just narrow in showing the parts of the contract that are being updated. I think there's some very reasonable adjustments being made, and it's a very fair agreement. So I'll be in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Any other discussion? Okay. So can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yep.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. So discussion, item G. Discussion and action regarding Local 1303-46 Secretary Cafeteria Union Contract Agreement. So I need a motion to approve the Local 1303-46 Secretary Cafeteria Union Contract Agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Dr. Callanan, seconded by Ms. Pickett. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, it's similar along the comments I made on the last item. The board did get the opportunity to review the changes to the tentative agreement and executive session. All the changes and line items are identified, gave us the opportunity to review it, and everything seems as reasonable updates that are needed for this contract. So I'll be in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callanan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Pickett, seconded by Mr. Coburn. Show of hands, all in favor. Eight in favor, none against.
We didn't.
Thank you. Scott, he's out.[1372.26]